Excellent. So we are on, Brian.
Excellent. Good evening, good evening residents of Litchfield. As Chair of the Litchfield School Board, I find the due for the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 epidemic. In accordance to the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to this meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Google Meet for this electronic meeting. All members of Litchfield School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary to participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-866-899-4679. And the password is 249-391-757. Again, I'll repeat the number 866-899-4679. And the password is 249-391-757. We're at the following website, Litchfield Community TV. Providing public notice and necessary information for assessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of Litchfield School Board at schoolboardagendas. Provide a mechanism to the public. If anybody has a problem, please email Christina Harrison at c-harrison@lichfieldsd.org or Michelle Flynn at neflynn@lichfieldschooldistrict.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. I'd like to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. With each member states their presence. Please also state whether if anyone is in room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So I'll go right down the line. Tina?
I'm here. And no one else is in room? Oh, no.
Sorry.
How would you?
Just yell.
I'm here, just with my dog.
Liz?
Here. Hold on.
Rob?
I'm here with Dr. Mike Jettie, Rob Fay, and Jason Pelletier.
And I'm here alone, Brian. Alright. Excellent. So one further note that once this meeting is done, will adjourn, will not go back in the public or non-public. I don't believe we're going to non-public, correct? Once we're done in the meeting, we'll just be shutting down. So I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
We do not.
So summary of non-public actions from May 6, 2020. Mr. Myers made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of April 5th and 29th, Mr. Harrison II. The motion carried by a roll call vote, Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Myers made a motion to accept the nomination of Emily Post as CHS science teacher at salary of $5,174 for the 2020-2021 year. Mrs. Harrison II, motion carried by roll call vote, Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. Mr. Myers made a motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate a memorandum of agreement with the LEA with the following parameters. Students will finish the 2019-2020 year with 180 instructional days at the end of June 18, 2020. Or two students will finish the year with 173 instructional days at the end of June 9, 2020, with teachers working seven additional days as follows: Credit for three days of past work, record at least 12 previous hours of professional development in MLP, one day of closeout of the current school year, and three days or 21 hours of new professional development to be completed between June 10 and June 18, 2020. This is McDonald II. The motion carried by a roll call vote, Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. Hirschberger, yes. And Mr. Burke, yes. Vote carried 5-0-0, obviously. So that will bring us to correspondence. Tina?
You're muted, Tina. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I have three email messages. The first one is from Colleen Gomash. I don't have an address from her, but Michelle, I did forward you the email. So it reads, "Dear CAGS School Board Member, my name is Colleen Gomash. I have a graduating senior and I'm a parent on the CHS graduation committee. I'm writing to you as I've been told the school board and superintendent are pushing to have a June 5 or 6 graduation. Myself, along with three other parents from the CHS community, joined the graduation committee last week. At the end of the May 13 meeting, the committee, which includes four administrators, four teachers, four parents, four students, Litchfield Fire Chief and Litchfield Police Chief, were all in agreement to hold a live graduation on July 24 or 25 adhering to state guidelines on the CHS football field. Just a few hours after that meeting, an email came out from Dr. Jettie stating a tentative graduation date of June 5 or 6. If we plan to have a graduation ceremony in the first weekend in June, we respectfully ask that the event be live with all 99 students in attendance, along with their guests. If this cannot be accommodated, we request the graduation be pushed to the July 24-25 date, which was the agreed upon date by the graduation committee. Yesterday, myself and the three other parents on the graduation committee with Bill Lonergan and Mike Perez to review a plan that Jim Norton put together for a social distancing ceremony. Once again, Mr. Lonergan and Mr. Perez were in favor of the plan, as well as a later graduation date, July 24 through 25. Our hope is that the school board and superintendent will see the significant time and effort members of the graduation committee have put into the plan to ensure a safe and memorable ceremony for the students and their families. Unfortunately, for this senior class, they've been stripped of the opportunity to celebrate their senior activities and accomplishments together. It would be commendable if the CHS administration, superintendent, and school board could listen to the students and their parents' guardians and honor the request for a fully represented student plus four guests live graduation ceremony. Mr. Lonergan has a copy of the plan. Thank you for your time and consideration, Colleen Gomash." The next one I received was from Teresa Bodett. It reads, "Dear Dr. Jettie and members of the Litchfield School Board, after the final dates for this school year were announced last week in an email from Dr. Jettie, I was surprised and saddened to further read that the graduation date was determined to be June 5 with a rain date of June 6. This decision seemed abrupt and arbitrary and did not include all the stakeholders or bear in mind the full ramifications of enacting such an early graduation date. As a parent member of the graduation committee, I've seen firsthand the dedication that the CHS administration and teachers have for our students. It is truly inspiring. Countless hours of outside the box thinking and discussion have occurred in an effort to create a graduation for the flat between 2020 that is personal and memorable while keeping safety as a top priority for all. The CAGS administration and graduation committee has indeed developed an exciting and innovative plan that would do exactly this. It has been a privilege to be part of these truly productive and thoughtful meetings where new ideas are embraced and students are the focus. Through surveys, it has been very clear that our administration, teachers, parents, and most importantly, our seniors all want the same thing, as close to a traditional graduation as can be implemented in these unprecedented times. This team has put in the time and continues to work through the details of a truly remarkable event that will be one for our seniors to look back upon with pride, knowing how much their graduation matters. Given the world pandemic that we are experiencing, along with increased protocol involved in presenting a large-scale graduation during this time, I would respectfully ask the board to reconsider the early graduation date and allow Principal Lonergan and the graduation committee the flexibility to choose a later June or July date, allowing for better planning and safer implementation of a truly innovative graduation ceremony. Effectively submitted, Teresa Bodett, A. Hamel Circle, Litchfield." And the last one I have is from Jim Norton. He says, "I am a parent of a senior and a member of the graduation committee. At our meeting today, we reviewed a comprehensive plan to have an outdoor graduation for the CHS class of 2020. This plan has all 99 seniors and their families in the football field at CHS with social distancing. Tonight, Bill Lonergan will present this plan that has approval of everyone on the committee, as well as Litchfield PD and Fire. We're hoping the superintendent and the school board will approve the plan so we can move forward with honoring our seniors in the safest way possible. Jim Norton, Norwood Hopeway." And I sent those to you, Michelle, as of this moment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now we have school board comments? Anyone have anything?
You skipped superintendent?
No, it's right under. I have comments first and superintendent.
Oh, yeah, but school board is after that, but that's okay.
Alright, I'll come back with them. They can have the left comments. So we're both just... Wait, no, it's because it says comments superintendent instead of superintendent comments.
I thought it would be easier to kind of put everything under comments for the people that were commenting.
Next one.
Is it my turn, Brian?
I think so.
Okay. So, and actually, I'm glad that Bill is in with us. And we have graduation actually marked under the old business section, but I'm going to pull that up to my comments so we can just, you know, talk about graduation and get Bill and Mike on their way. Unless they want to stay longer, they're welcome to.
No, I was actually going to ask that because I think a couple of things that refer, like reference to high school, whether or not we want to bring them all up from the old business to use right now.
I think we should let them speak and get their business done, and then we can go into our...
Right. What I'm saying is other things aside from graduation that would involve them. Grading for one. They may have something like that.
Yeah, so let me just, let me go through the points that I have, and then we'll turn it over to Bill and Mike, and we'll hit all the pieces that we need to. If there's anything further, we can hit that when we get back to the old business part. So actually, the first item under my comments is on the CTE V-Lax update. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had several parents who had emailed in with comments about including those course experiences on a student's GPA. And Bill and I had a conversation. So Bill, can you just give the board an update where you've landed and why that's worked itself out? So I...
Sure, sure. So there are a couple of different pieces to this. One of the primary ones, which was a concern I know of Liz, was related to V-Lax classes. For this year, it's actually relatively simple, as long as we change the student handbook and the school board policies. But currently, in our handbook, we don't give kids credit for V-Lax towards their GPA. If we wait and hold off on applying V-Lax courses till after June 30, that course, we can put that on their GPA for the student. We can't put it on now because the challenge with doing that is we already have GPAs for all of our seniors, which have become dependent for top 10s, become dependent for graduation with distinction. So that sort of is a little ripple on that.
But that will count the freshmen, the sophomores, and the juniors that have been taking V-Lax?
Correct, correct. Yep.
I think that's fair. I think the word, I think they're learning the way our students are learning right now, and they should get credit for all their hard work. And it actually gives them another few weeks to get their V-Lax done until June 30.
Correct. Right. And so then the other two that we had talked about, which would be a part of this, would be students who take college courses. Okay? And this is in the policy IHCD, which talks about advanced coursework and college placement. That would need to be updated to reflect that college classes count toward GPAs. Okay, currently, it doesn't reflect that. So the board would have to change that at some point for the next school year. So because V-Lax isn't in the policies there, we simply need to change it within the handbook. But we can, for the V-Lax courses, give the kids credit. We just want to hold off till after June 30 so that we can appropriately make sure it impacts their GPAs.
Would this apply to the CTE courses at Inverton and Alverton too?
I was just going to get to that. Yep. And that, Lord, you just have a program of studies. So we would have to change that within the program of studies, and Mike Perez can do this when we work together over the summer. Simply reflecting that beginning in the 2021 school year, CTE classes will be factored into student GPA.
That's awesome.
Okay. Yep.
And we can vote on whatever policies need to be updated.
Correct. Yep. We'd have to give you some sense of what those should look like, and we haven't done the revision on them, but it's not up to the board to do.
Fantastic. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Thanks, Bill.
Really seems like the right thing to do. Not having a high school student, I was actually really surprised to hear that these were not part of it.
Yeah, they're approved school, so it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. And Jordan and I have been talking about this with Mike for a couple of years now.
That wasn't me.
So going forward, that's where we are on it. I think, understanding why, you know, doing something now, it actually, I mean, we've done sports awards that you might have to revoke or reissue, or it just gets so ugly in the middle of it. So we'll wait until after everything's closed out, do the calc's, and be good to go from that point. So thank you, Bill, for that. Michelle, can you make a note on policy IHCD? We'll bring that to the board for review. And if you can do a draft revision that is necessary based on all this, I think we can get it in front of the board at the next meeting.
Awesome. Can I just clarify something? I know we're talking about this year. We just mentioned the handbook as far as changing the handbook for next year. And I think we're getting ahead of ourselves right now. We're discussing this year as far as getting V-Lax because we're going through the remote learning, along with CTE. I mean, we could have another discussion as far as if we want to change the handbook for 21-22. But right now, we're just looking at 19-20 school year that we feel that it's fair because we're going through remote learning now, correct?
Yes.
As a permanent change, or, you know, until a school board revokes it. But I understood it as a change moving forward.
That's what I was going to clarify too, because I kept hearing this school year, but I don't understand why it wouldn't carry forward. No, it could be this, it could be this school year now, Brian, pending Bill presenting and updating a future meeting to the handbook, because we have to approve those anyways.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. Right now, we're looking to change the policy more forward to reflect in this year's.
But personally, I would hope that that is going to be reflected, that it's going forward, going to count.
And Bill, your intent is to bring it forward in the handbook, so...
That's correct. Right. And there's one other piece. There's a second policy. It's IIMB. So this talks about distance learning. And it doesn't discuss GPA anywhere in there. So we're proposing to change that so that it reflects that distance learning is V-Lax.
That's component of it.
Right. But it doesn't, it doesn't, IIMB just talks about distance learning, which is such a, I guess, a strange term that we use now. I mean, maybe if you pull that up, Michelle, and take a look at it at some point, I can take a look at it as well.
I don't want to be leaving V-Lax out of it, just say whatever, certified or accredited. That way, when V-Lax is gone, then the next one can be changed in it.
Excellent. So Brian, my second point on here is that we are into student handbook time of year, where we're going to begin that editing process. And so I just wanted to raise that to the board to be ready, because we're going to start to get those pulled together and asking the principals and assistant principals, who usually do the bulk of the work, to start the summary of changes that they want to bring forward. So...
That's what I was talking about with the student handbook at our next meeting. If we're going to brought the policy at our next meeting to approve for like this year, we can take care of that. The handbook is going to come to us later on.
Right.
We're not looking to change the handbook right now.
Nope. But that's, but that's coming sooner than later. And so just that awareness piece. And there's other things that are on here. I mean, my next item to talk about is the dress code, because we had, we had the committee, we had come up with the dress code. There was concern from the board, and it really came down to one sentence in the dress code. It was about high school teachers being able to allow hats in their classroom if they were comfortable with it, and the board was concerned about that clause. I brought it back to the high school admin team, which, again, was part of the review process and stood behind that, but it's ultimately a board decision. We frankly kicked the can down the road, saying, well, we have time to get after this. And then little did we know, we weren't going to have any dress code issues this spring because we were going to be remote learning, but we need to have the finalized policy so that we can get it into the handbooks for next year. So on the, on the dress code, and this is great because Mike was on the committee, Tina was on the committee, Bill's been a part of weighing in. A reminder, we did not have a high school rep on the committee, but we do have Trevor and Chloe that are here. We just need a decision on whether the dress code as written, you know, my recollection of all of it was, the only concern was that one sentence about hats. And so...
So I'll ask, we're, Bill and Mike are both on his call. So I have a teacher at the high school that says, "Yeah, you can wear a hat." Then the next class, they go, "So what, they can't wear it in the hallway?" And then the next class, they go, "What's that?"
I wasn't, I was misunderstood by that because I was under the impression that we were going to let them wear it in the hallways, and it was teacher discretion in the classroom.
That's, that's correct, Mike. That's the way it's written. That's what we were concerned with.
They say, "Take off the hat."
So Mike, I think we, I think we got bad information or misunderstood something like, because we were under the impression teachers could allow them to wear them, but they weren't allowed to wear them in the hallway. And we said, "Who, no, nobody's going to follow that." That was our concern. So they will be able...
Allow it in the hallway.
So common areas, they can wear them, but teachers can then tell them to take it off in the classroom.
That's how I understood it.
Okay. Because we were concerned, we were afraid one teacher let them wear it one period, then the rest of the day, they couldn't wear it because none of their, they couldn't wear it in the hallway, they couldn't wear it at lunch, they couldn't wear it in gym. So we just thought you're setting everybody up for failure. But if they can wear it everywhere unless a teacher, I...
So, so let me just clarify, and Mike and Tina, make sure I've got this right. We were basically removing the restriction on hats at the high school only. So it remained in place at LMS, it remained in place at GMS, but except for when there's, I don't know if they have crazy hat day or whatever, but at the high school, removing that restriction, but empowering faculty members, if they felt the hat was a distraction, offensive, whatever, they would be empowered and supported 100% by the admin team to have a no hat in my room policy. Just, you know, that's, that's their right, that's their prerogative, and they would be supported on that.
Okay. And we're referencing hats only, right? Not headgear, because part of the policy mentions headgear, hoodies, or any other type of scarf or anything else on your head. It's this hat.
That is my understanding. Yep.
Now we're talking about all kinds of hats?
I'm going to wear a cowboy hat.
You're a cowboy.
We do have a, we do have one student that tries to wear a cowboy hat.
So now, now he'll be allowed to?
I think you have to be. Yeah, I don't think we can say baseball hat or...
What does the staff at the high school think about this? Were they all for it? I'm sure it was 50-50.
Yeah, there was, there was a good chunk of people that said that they don't, they enforced it in their classrooms, they enforced it just because it was the rule. But a lot of them were like, either way, it doesn't matter. And then there were some faculty members that were like, "Yeah, I'll probably have them take off their hat in the classroom." Which those, some of the teachers, oh, sorry, Tina, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I know that the LMS admin and the GMS admin also, they are, they were on board with the no hats policy of those schools. But we have a sentence there that says that it would be up to the graders, right, if they're allowed in, you know, a list of circumstances or as directed by administrators. So do we need to single out CHS as a place where teachers can wear their classrooms? Or can we make that a, teachers can decide if the hats are restricted or not in their classrooms for all schools?
Well, didn't you just say the admin team does not want them in those schools?
What's that?
Didn't you just say that the admin team said they do not want hats at GMS and LMS?
Right. I'm just saying that, you know, the policy says that they are allowed as the administrators see fit. So are we, I don't know.
Well, Tina, that's for things like... Oh, no, but that's a, that's a fun thing, like on the first day of baseball or football season or something. That's, that's why you want to give them the leeway to do that.
Right. And that's what Mike was just saying. I mean, they have like opening day ceremonies all the time, so they want a hat.
I know. I just didn't know if we were opening, if the can of worms was open because we singled out CHS as a place where teachers have the authority to say who can wear hats in the classroom.
Oh, but they have the authority to say...
You know, at LMS, the teachers would also have that authority, you know, if the administrators decide that they're going to say, "We don't care about hats anymore, you can wear hats."
I think if they were to say, "We don't care," then we'd come back and change the policy. I mean, right now, you have an admin team that doesn't want hats.
Okay.
From the sounds of it, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, but someone just stated that.
No, that's fine. I guess I was just trying to make it, you know, that's on three schools.
When I, when I was at my former school, we had a no hat policy for kids. And it was, it was such a painful experience for so many high school kids who used to wear their hats around. And it was, it was a discipline issue. It became, you know, non-compliance issues. I've not been a fan of no hat policies. I just think it's not, it's not an important... So, but, but in the classroom, if the kid's got his hat on and he's sleeping, or if our teachers are concerned about cheating and reading up under there, I don't have a problem in a classroom if the teacher says, "I want my students to take their hats off."
Alright, you won me over, Bill. You won me over, you wore me down.
Well, I think, you know, it's based on past experiences that aren't necessarily reflected in the world today. And our young man here is a perfect example of that, as he's sitting in our school board meeting, right?
That's who family is.
In fact, in fact.
Yes.
Are we going to let teachers wear hats, Bill?
I know. That's not part of a professional, which is happening in the school. Yeah.
That's one of our questions. Okay. Just check.
Well, on a special day, they should be, you know, cowboy day.
Cowboy day.
I'm going to make a motion to approve policy JICA in Brooklyn. Further discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
I have something, Brian. So my son was, kind of tested the dress code policy last year. And I, I should give that up. He was a thought of, um...
We can't...
Oh, sorry. He wore a virginity rock sweatshirt. And I understand... A virginity rock sweatshirt. And I fully anticipated that he would be dress coded because of it. And he wasn't. And so looking at this policy, I don't think he would be either. And I just wanted to bring that up. You know, I understand that some people say that... But I wonder if that's something that we can address via this policy.
It should be up to the administrator. If it's causing problems in the school and disrupting the day, they should change it. I think it's pretty clear, you know, if it's impacting the day.
If I'm a principal's job, I guess, they're much more in Martha or in charge of the dress code thing?
I guess it's in middle school, half the kids have no idea.
Did you read the requirements in the second game? There's, I mean, the virginity rocks in itself doesn't, it's not owning any type of...
Well, no, but it does refer, it's...
Well, but it, it does refer, it, it's referencing sexual acts and lewd conduct. So I think that will fall under that umbrella.
And if, and if I had a child who walked by me in a rocks, I'd have a conversation with the child and say, come to the office and have, or actually bring him to Mike and say, let's have a conversation.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, because, because of that exact reason, you know, it's definitely sexual activity.
Mike and Martha, you're a hundred percent on board on enforcing this policy? Fred? Oh, he's muted.
I was on the, uh, committee, so yeah, definitely.
Awesome.
I think it's pretty clear, Emily.
It actually, it makes my life a lot easier, especially with diagrams.
Yeah. It's a little paper doll chart.
I'm, I'm probably gonna laminate it.
Well, you're a little friend.
Right. Okay.
So we have a motion made by myself, Brian. It was second, I believe, by Tina.
Yeah.
And then everyone voted, so I'll go right down the line. Tina?
Uh, yes, aye.
Liz?
Yes.
Tara?
Uh, aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I'm a aye. So five zero zero.
Can I just, for clarity, um, this doesn't require a second read, right? Because we sort of had this at one point.
I think you've had a first and second read already.
Okay, so the copy I have doesn't really have any notes, so we'll just make sure Michelle did notate the first read and then the vote tonight.
Actually, I don't believe there were any readings on the policy. Because there was, uh, a lot of, you know, going back and forth about the hats and stuff and going back to the committee. So I think I'll treat this as a first reading.
Right, so. I, I disagree, Michelle. If we go back, it wa, it was in front of everybody and there was that question raised.
But, you know what, I'll check.
We'll approve it at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Okay.
And so we'll begin the process of incorporating this into handbook language. So, um, that's the key thing is that as we begin that revision, this will become, because obviously the, uh, the paper doll picture is gonna be uh, used throughout, right? So excellent. Thank you for that. And then, uh, quickly on enrollment, so I think you have a live-in link, correct, to the enrollment numbers? Um, and so just to point out that, uh, this is in particular at GMS because we are monitoring those class sizes uh, pretty closely. So you can see the, um, the, the counts that you have there. Uh, the kindergarten count is at sixty-four. So that's a number that we really pay close attention to. And we're paying very close attention to the first grade number, which is eighty students currently. And remember, the eighty-four is the trigger number to add a fifth, uh, first grade in. So we're, uh, four students away from, um, that number. So again, if there's somebody in the community who has yet to enroll a first grader, we would ask you to do so sooner than later because we're watching that very closely. And, uh, Joyce is providing now, it looks like weekly updates for us. So we, we have good data that's coming in and we'll keep that linked for the board so that we can, uh, stay on topic. Um, all right, so those were my comments. Let's bring it around to, um, graduation. And while we have Bill and Mike here, we'll talk about that. And then I'm gonna talk about, uh, grading update and the no harm grading concept that we've been discussing with our staff and just where that stands. And I'll ask Bill and Mike to stay on for that discussion also, so.
Mike, there was an, an item about Latin honors?
Uh, so, yeah, so Bill and I, um, Bill and I have engaged in conversation about this. I, I, you know, to me, give me one second here. Um, just i- in, in the midst of this, um, you know, trying to figure out GPAs and counting heads and lining them up from number one to number ninety-nine. Um, you know, versus going to a system which has tiers that, that all students are able to achieve um, is a dialogue and a conversation that we've, we've had in the past, so.
I thought, I thought it was, uh, you were proposing a language course.
Me too.
No.
Okay, I'm on board. I'm on board now. Okay.
Yeah, this is, uh, in, instead of, you know, so for example, Bill talked about the calculation of the top ten and the importance of GPA on that. And honestly, we're, we're splitting hairs. I mean, you're, you're out to decimal points of a decimal point to figure out who is in which order, right? Uh, versus a system like what they use at the collegiate level where, um, nobody's rank ordering at the college. They're saying, if you achieve a certain GPA, you get a designation of magna cum laude, summa cum laude. Um, and so following a system along those lines, I think exploring that deeper now in the midst of everything we're doing with the grading conversation is, is worthwhile. So that's what I referenced by that. Um, but we, we've got work to do on it and I just wanted to bring it up here as something that we're paying closer attention to. So. All right, graduation. So Mike and Bill, you've got a plan that came hot off the press a couple hours ago. Um, and we heard, uh, parent comments and so forth. Um, and if I, if I could just lead with the, the one point that I've really anchored on, and it's sort of the heartstring comment, was around our seniors who have chosen to enlist in the military. And I think we have two of them, uh, this year. And for me, it's, it's just a, you know, almost a non-negotiable to do any planning that, that would rule them out. Because they've exercised, uh, a desire to serve our country and therefore signed on a dotted line and the military has said, you're ours on this date, you know, June twenty-sixth, you're ours. We're shipping you off. You don't get to come home on the weekend. You don't get to, you know, even have access to some remote, uh, participation point. You're ours now. Um, and so I've encouraged Mike and Bill to think and, and have had the conversation with the board. You know, it wasn't arbitrary. It was how do we have something that has an opportunity for a hundred percent of the kids to participate? Not an opportunity for ninety-eight percent to participate because two out of ninety-nine are sweating it out in Paris Island while the rest of us are, you know, trying to figure out, uh, summer in New Hampshire. So those to me were like deal breakers, like we gotta do this. We gotta rally around every family, not what's convenient for most families. Um, and I think, you know, if you wanna have Fox News on the front lawn of, um, Campbell High School, come up with, come up with a date that doesn't include everybody and it's gonna get really a ton of pressure. So I, I really want us to focus on trying to do something for a hundred percent. Um, so having said that, I know that the high school and the committee, I, I get it. I get the planning, but I just think if we can do this in a way that involves everyone, that's to me paramount. But so now that I let my bias out and, and my heartstring piece on it, I'll, I'll ask Mike and Bill to detail where they are and what they think can be done for a hundred percent of the kids.
Sure. So, um, so Mike and I spent, uh, I don't know, three or four hours yesterday sort of corrupting a plan from another school and sort of applying it to what we could do at Campbell. Today we met with the graduation, or actually I did. Mike was, uh, in some, uh, some staffings, so he wasn't able to be there, but we met with the, the committee again. Um, I, I wanna speak to Mike's point about, uh, about our two, uh, military signings.
It could be possibly three. Could be possible.
Could be a third?
Yeah, could be a third.
Okay, but that, that is not an imminent heading out. Do you think, Mike? Is that somebody who could be going in the next couple of weeks?
Um, possibly.
Okay.
Possibly, at least in, uh, by July. I just found that out today.
Okay, all right. So, so the, the two that I'm aware of, one is, uh, shipping out on June twenty-eighth. And the other is shipping out on July twenty-eighth. At least that's what we have at the moment. So it won't be before then. So, um, the committee really wanted to push graduation off, thinking somehow there would be a greater relaxing, social distancing opportunity to take advantage of that. Um, we initially went along with that, but at the same time, we were talking about especially recognizing these two if they weren't able to be there. But Mike, I agree with you. I think we should do something that provides for them the once in a lifetime opportunity to participate in the graduation. Um, I will say though, that I feel stressed, um, by June fifteenth being the tentative date. And I think if we have the June twelfth, June nineteenth, or June twenty-sixth, we do have the possibilities on each of those weekends to do this. Um, and I think we would put together, we've got a good plan right now. It needs some, it needs some revisions. It needs a couple of little um, tucks to it. We have to create sort of diagram of traffic patterns and flow patterns of students and cars and that nature. Those aren't done yet, but, but we're close on those. So Mike, have you had a chance to share the latest copy of the plan with everybody?
I, I haven't, Bill. I literally, uh, it came in after I was in meetings and I came right down, so.
Okay.
Um, let me.
Do you want me to share it?
Can you present? Can you, can you present?
I think I can. Hold on.
If it's socially responsible and following the guidelines and police and fire are fine with it, I would be fine with it as well. I'm trusting you did your due diligence.
Yes, they were, they were active in that today.
Yeah, Frank was, Frank was definitely in the meeting today.
Yep.
Oh, look at you. Tech savvy.
Uh, you wouldn't have sent that two weeks ago. Okay, is that big enough for you to read or do you want, do you need me to enlarge it?
Uh, if you, if you click on the document, it'll become our screen, so we'll all have it.
Oh, you don't, you don't have it?
We have, uh, you have to click on the window that you are, you're sharing your whole window. So click on the, um, the graduation plan window.
Oh, okay.
And it will become our life.
Okay, hold on. I'm not seeing the graduation plan window. I'm seeing.
Just click on.
It's showing, it's telling me to stop sharing.
I don't know if he just clicks on any of the light, it gets full screen if he clicks on anything.
Can't, I can't anchor.
I'm not seeing that. Let me try, let me try doing it again.
One se, one second, one second. Hang on.
There you go.
I, I, I've got it. This is better. I had to turn off grid view, so.
Well, okay.
You're all set. Just, uh, yep, plug right ahead. We can all see it.
Can you read it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So starting off, uh, up at the top, um, is our CHS policy, athletic field, June fifth, rain date, June sixth. Again, I'd like to maybe talk about, uh, changing that to the later next weekend or the weekend after. Uh, five thirty PM would be the actual start of graduation. Um, our goals really are primarily ensure students, family participants are socially distant and safe. Maintain a constant distance of at least six feet and we actually provide greater distance. Um, and I'm not presenting the map right now, but the map, if we take a look at that, that, um, you'll see how we, how we're gonna do that. And then to make sure that all surfaces are clean between speakers who are going to speak, um, between students when they grow up and take their diploma off of a, a table that we have up on the stage. So the way we have this planned is to have, you'll see the pre-event planning here, which is, uh, and we break it down into the various groups. So graduate and graduates, family members. The first bullet there is one vehicle per family. And no more than four men, family members are allowed to attend the graduation ceremony. One of the things we discussed today is split families. And mom and dad can't be in the same car because of those family circumstances. Or a family member has to work and has to come separately because they went, weren't, wouldn't be with the family. So we talked, those situations where you needed two cars, um, they would have to make a special request through me, number one, and we would still limit them to only four family members. The details, the devil's in the details on that in terms of how you park people like next to each other or how you seat them. So that's a piece that we still have to work out a little bit. And, and speaking quite frankly, that this is one of those things that a kid who comes from that family circumstance might ask for, for a parent. So that's one of those things we have to address. We're going to issue parents an eight by, eight and a half by eleven parking pass with the graduate's last name. And, um, that's gonna be on the passenger side window. So when they drive into Campbell High School, a person who's checking them, which will be the athletic director, possibly there'll be a resource, uh, excuse me, a police officer at that entrance just to support them, make sure who the parent or who the child is, who the parent is, they have there for, and direct them to their spaces. The parking lot, we're planning on being open from four fifteen, four fifteen. And with people in their places, no later than five o'clock. This is gonna require, require some logistical work from staff members assisting. So, um, the other piece to this, which is handicap spots. Sometimes we do have a family that needs a handicap spot. Um, if that's the case, we need to make sure that those people contact us. One of the real keys to, to parking in this environment is we have to park so that we can get people filing in according to where they sit for graduation, for the calling of names. So we're planning on, if you can visualize this, looking at the field and looking at the press spots from the school. There are two gates, one on the right side and one on the left side, as well as the center gate. The student's gonna walk in on the left and right sides. So they will go into the, into the rows and they will go, there's a center row there, so they'll go into the row with their family and they'll stop. Okay? And that way we don't have people crossing paths with each other. So that'll determine how we park them, breaking that down. And we haven't done the name analysis and the speakers and done those things. Okay? Because that'll determine how we line up the kids. Okay? So, um, so when, when the kids and their families roll in, um, we, we are, they're gonna stay in their car until they're directed to enter the graduation area. We're not gonna have them get out of their cars, walk around, socialize, or, or risk those temptations. So that, ask them to actually wait there. They are going to be required to ensure those five bulleted points on here. Okay? They haven't been in close contact with the confirmed case of COVID nineteen, haven't had a fever or felt feverish in the last seventy-two hours. These are all coming out of the guidance for reopening from this, from the state. So we're, we're going to ask them to ensure that these are, these are things that they can meet when they come to, to us. We haven't created a form for that yet, but I think we're gonna need to create something that parents sign off on to ensure that this is the case when they come to us. But we also have to take it on, on faith to some degree that they're going to, that they're going to be doing this. Those attending are going to be asked to bring and wear masks until they're seated in their assigned graduation spot. If, if they don't have masks, we do have plenty in the high school, so we will have masks available for, for people to provide to them. Um, we are asking them that if, please do not attend the ceremony if you have been in contact or experienced any of those symptoms. We're gonna say this multiple times throughout this document. Um, because we, we safety, that's ultimately what this is about. Okay? And we, we don't need to risk people's safety here. So this is really important to us. Um, when we spoke with police and, uh, the fire in particular, they, um, they stated that, uh, that it isn't necessary to wear the masks the entire time during the ceremony as long as we maintain our social distancing. And it's outdoors. They were comfortable with the fact that this would be outdoors. We have ten seat, ten feet between each of the seating spaces that we've assigned to each of the student and their family members. So there's plenty of space between each of them, not to have to worry about the masking off and people coughing on each other or doing some of those other things. Okay? So once, once we have all the, all the graduates and their families in the parking lot and in their assigned spaces, we will reach a point where by radio, we will begin directing them into the graduation area. Again, by rows, so that they can make it in there. But before we do that, we're going to have any faculty and staff who want to come in. They're going to park in the back of the building. They'll be wearing their robes, or in the case of faculty that don't have, or staff that don't have degrees, they'll be dressed appropriately for graduation. They will be wearing masks. When we start the processional for pomp and circumstance, the faculty are gonna walk down the center from the front of the building individually and go from left to right to their seats on either side of the stage. Once the faculty is in during pomp and circumstance, then we'll begin directing the students and their families through the outside gates to go to their seats. So it'll be essentially no, no chance of crossover. Our middle aisle in the diagram is fifteen feet wide. So there won't be a chance for faculty to sort of be pushed in and combined by that space.
Are they gonna be spaced out to be on either side of the?
Yes, that's correct. If, if you, if you see the plan, if, the plan for the faculty seating isn't. If you, if you see the plan, if, the plan for the faculty seating isn't proportional, so it's really hard to get a sense of. I also don't know how many faculty and staff are planning to attend right now.
Right.
So if we have 60, that's 30 on either side, we're really gonna have to spread them out on either side. If it's 30, 15 on either side, a little less of, a little less of a challenge to do that. But typically in the past in graduation, faculty's only on the right-hand side, sitting in a little triangular area near the, near the graduates. And that won't be the case, they'll be off to either side of the stage, they'll be able to see the stage, they'll be able to see the graduates coming across, so they'll still have that ability to participate. So, so, um, let me go further. Okay, once they're in their seats, they'll, they're, they're going to stay in their seats until the conclusion of the ceremony. This was the advice from both police and fire today, was to emphasize to people, the only reason they're going to leave a seat is if they have an emergency. They also made it clear, how are they gonna handle an emergency, meaning if you are feeling sick and you need to leave? Mask on, and if you're capable, you can walk out, but we're likely not gonna ask you to walk, let you walk back in, that just have moving through in the mouth. If you are incapable of moving, somebody from your party has to mask on, get assistance from police and fire, and then figure out what we're going to do during the course of the ceremony. My hope is we don't have to worry about that, um, but we need to prepare for it regardless. Okay? Let's see.
No porta potty?
Uh, well, you know, that's a great question, in a way. No, we don't have them, and the reason for that is that we haven't, we've had no spring sports.
But I was just curious, like that's something to keep in mind.
Well, and, and the challenge with that is, is, uh, we can talk sanitary and clean and all of those things, a tight confined space, somebody going in there, somebody going in right after, uh, that makes me uncomfortable. The one thing we did talk about is if there were absolute, you know, emergency, somebody had to use the restroom, there, there are the outside bathrooms on the northeast side of the building near the baseball field. Okay? We could open those and have a staff member out there to clean after somebody might use it. Um, and so, you know, I defer to you in terms of the putting porta potties out there, but I don't think it's a very good idea.
I just wanted to know if you discussed it.
We did.
Yeah, we did, and I actually, um, emailed Dave to see if, if it was, if it fell under Primate, or if it was a law that we had to provide, uh, bathroom facilities, I don't know.
When I spoke today, Frank mentioned that he would suggest that we don't have porta potties available.
I agree.
And just emphasize to people that this might be a two-hour ceremony, don't, don't bring too much water beforehand or while you're there, um, but understand it's, it's gonna provide some challenges, um, and, and you have to be socially distant if you do find a need, that you have to be. I, I'm not comfortable with sort of people coming and going, moving around, that doesn't, doesn't make me comfortable at all. Okay, um, moving forward, uh, I talked about emergencies which are on here. Somebody have a question?
I talked about how to keep it going, so it's not so long, you know what I mean?
Yep, yeah, yeah, that is, that is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be longer than our usual hour, hour and 20, hour and 30 minutes. It's going to be unavoidable simply by maintaining the social distancing and those things. I still think we can get this done in under two hours. Okay?
Yeah.
I'm fully confident. The challenge is going to be, uh, speeches, speakers, and, um, we've had lengthy graduation speakers at some times. Um, these, they're going to, we've discussed the idea of having them limited to three minutes. Okay, that's me. I want three minutes. Now you're talking about a valedictorian of a high school. You only have three minutes, particularly in this time. However, we, we, we wanna make sure that we're sensitive to having people out on the field for a couple of hours, we can't be having long, lengthy speeches. Yep. And, and I'm, and I'm under the assumption for students when they speak, they generally don't wanna be out there for 16, 17 minutes, they wanna, and we tend, we, we approve their speeches anyway just to make sure that they're appropriate in terms of their content, so those will be coming in in the next couple of days, I think, uh, I think early next week we should have those. Yeah. Okay. So in the section on families, talk about if family members need transportation, sometimes we have people who need transportation from their car to the spot on the field. Okay? So we, we have always utilized the, uh, the fire, the fire department has brought down a golf cart to transport people, so we, uh, we've always asked them to contact Elena in, in the office to, uh, to make sure that we can accommodate those people. I don't know how many we might need this year, it may be a handful, but those are some that we're going to have to consider how to get them in there, and it may be before the ceremony starts that we move them out into their spot so that they're already seated when the others are proceeding in. All staff that are supporting the graduation ceremony will wear masks, they'll remain in their assigned areas, maintaining the social distance of six feet or more. Again, we haven't figured out where people are going to be standing on the field, but if they are far enough away from people, they will be able to take their masks off as long as they're socially distant, but we haven't pinpointed those specific locations where, where we're gonna have people. We have identified in terms of the administrators where they're gonna be. And I mentioned Josh Flynn being at the main entrance, checking off people as they're coming in, so reading the name, checking off the, to make sure there's four people, five people in the car.
Josh Flynn, the police officer, or Josh?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, no, Josh.
Okay, that's fine, I was just curious.
Yep, so, so Mike Perez is going to be on the, at the left, at the left gate, Mike? Is that correct, looking at the field?
Yeah, we haven't determined which gate was one or two yet, but yeah, I'd be at one of the, one of the gates.
And then Jody, Jody would be at the other one, um, and then the class advisor will be around to, to gather and present additional support if we need to, that would be Amy Dashman. So, um, we, we haven't talked yet about school board members, superintendent, board chair, but in the past it's been the board chair, the superintendent on the stage with the principal and the other administration. Given the size of the stage, I'm not sure that it's wise to have all of us on, on the stage. My thinking is a principal, superintendent, and board chair, and then the other school board members seating, seated with the faculty. If that makes sense to you folks.
That's what we think, the school board, yeah, has not been on the stage.
Yep, yep, but, but we also traditionally have had Mike Perez, we've had Jared as the office.
Right, right.
Not gonna have the, the people on the board.
I guess, I guess my, my question is, are the, the speakers speaking from the stage or from the press box?
They're, they are gonna be speaking from the stage. Yep, um, the one thing we're talking about in terms of the press box, one is to have our Litchfield closed circuit TV, they are going to be present and assisting. So they may have two cameramen working out of the press box and one working with the handheld camera down on the ground. But we were also discussing Nate Cooper, who traditionally reads our names at graduation, him being in the press box to read the names off from there. The question is, is we have enough space to keep them all separate?
Pretty big up there.
Say that again?
It's pretty cool up there. I just have a question that someone, is the student or is that in addition to the student?
No, it's the student and four family members.
Oh, perfect.
Five, five total, yep. And we were asked the question today, what happens if somebody has a really small car? Squeeze in? I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to answer that, you know? So, I, I guess, I guess we'll cross that bridge when we, when we come to that, if somebody is in a, in a situation where they have a very small car and can't accommodate their family members. My hope is we don't have to worry about that. Okay, so, um, so going forward, uh, I mentioned Litchfield closed circuit TV, and one would be a handheld on the ground, two would be in the, uh, in the press box, again, maintaining social distancing. We, our plan is to have the photographer from Hockmeyer, um, to, to have a box space near the stage to take a photograph of the kids as they're coming off the stage. We are also having, and we haven't determined what this would be, but maintenance is usually on campus, they're on the ground, helping with graduation, particularly when it comes to setup and takedown, so there may be, um, uh, there may be a possibility of them assisting with the traffic out in the parking lot, assisting with sort of gates and, and those things, so we don't know.
Yeah, and they usually do.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't, don't know the exact numbers of them, but I think Dave pretty much brings everybody over for graduation, or at least everyone who's available, right, Mike?
Correct, yep.
Yep. Okay. Spoke with Ben today, Ben Sargent from Litchfield PD, his plan is to have, um, three cruisers on site and five to six officers. One of them will be parked at the main gate, which is the south entrance, the other will be parked at the north gate, which is the exit, and then the other one will be parked over at the bus, where the bus gate is, to the left of the football field as you're looking at it. We don't want people running, sneaking in, driving, driving in the back way, all of those other things that are potentially going to happen. I haven't, I haven't discussed this yet, but one of the, I'm wondering if we can get some sort of barricades. I know at graduations in high schools I've been at, people start at 5:00 in the morning, they sneak out, they hang out in certain places so that they can see the outside graduation. So that's something I, I, I'm gonna have to talk with, uh, with the rest of our staff about, or at least having somebody at the school early in the morning to make sure cars aren't there from people who shouldn't be there. So, uh, so, um, speaking of Ben, Ben was really awesome, really accommodating, they always are when it comes to graduation, so, um, so he, uh, he also discussed the, the idea that if somebody creates a challenge, for example, takes their masks off and, and going up to other people, and, um, he wants our permission to address them appropriately, which may mean escorting them out of graduation in a way that you would not typically see. I don't anticipate that, but I also think it's an important piece of this, making sure they were appropriate.
Hey, Bill?
Yes?
I don't know if I'm muted. I, I don't know if that goes against someone's civil rights, you can, I don't think you can make someone wear a mask. I, I, I might be wrong, but I've read enough stuff that's going on right now that.
I know businesses aren't allowed, 'cause that's a question that I was gonna actually talk to you, Bill, tomorrow, but we can just talk about it now. I do have a friend who owns a, a business, and he actually at first thought that he was gonna have to allow people to, uh, he was gonna force people to wear masks into, into his place of business, it's only the employees, so I don't know if that goes along with ours, like, do we, can we enforce them to wear masks into the ceremony? Or do we write in, we highly recommend that you wear a mask to your graduation spot?
I, I think that more than anything else.
Uh, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause I know Massachusetts made it mandatory across the board, but.
Right, yeah.
I don't think, that's what was concerning to me, so I was gonna bring that up.
Yeah, in Massachusetts you have to, my in-laws live in Wentworth, and they, they'll arrest you.
Yeah, and New Hampshire it's not, um, so I don't, I don't know if we can make that mandatory or not.
I, I, I think a couple of things that, you, you know, it's all how this gets presented to the public, uh, we're presenting it sort of to the public now in this forum, but this is appealing to people's common sense, we don't have to do this at all. We're trying to come up with a way to, you know, keep the balance, um, and, and I think we just have to say to folks, come on, you know, cooperate with us on these pieces, um, and so that we can do this event and do it safely. And, and, you know, frankly, I think everybody participating, they need to sign off on a waiver, that they're voluntarily participating, that they recognize there is risk inherent in, uh, people coming together, um, you know, and so if that's a Google form that people sign off and checkboxes and acknowledge these pieces, then we need to do that. Um, and, and we're really appealing to them that this is different, we apologize, it, but again, it's that difference between the ceremony that the school is endorsing and sponsoring, and frankly, when they all head off, uh, at the end of this, you know, they exit our grounds, if there's a gathering somewhere and, you know, that's where people's behavior, they're self-monitoring at that point, that's not us, right? But this is what we're asking people to buy in, and, and it's typical, you know, most people are gonna do it, a few will choose to buck the rules, but, um, but, you know, we have to structure it and appeal to the fact that we want their dignity, um, to do this in a dignified manner, to recognize our students.
Right, and, and I think, uh, opening the possibility as they sit in their seats to take their mask off for comfort.
Yep.
For those things is appropriate. And I, I, I saw something, uh, about a Costco, um, where an employee told someone, a customer, you can't buy your, your, your groceries, pulled the card, walked away, and it was okay. I understand that, now I don't wanna sit here and get in that, in that situation at all, I, again, Mike, you're right, appeals to their better nature about being safe and being, and being an important ceremony, and we wanna make sure it goes well.
But my, my point as far as like forcing someone to wear a mask, I, I just know that there are people that have feel very strongly as far as, nobody's gonna tell me what to do is, let alone wear a mask, so I'm just saying, and I agree, like, we, when you put the notice out, the strongly encourage to wear a mask, and I, I don't know if we wanna even like check with legal at this point, can we force someone?
I would check with legal, I would absolutely check with legal. If we can say you are required to wear a mask to attend the ceremony, I think we, we can do that.
Oh, absolutely.
A store can say, I require you to, to wear a mask if you come into my, my business.
Well, that's, that, you just used the right word, my business, if it's a private business, I think it's a little different.
Well, then I think this maybe, it's, well, we've already determined it's not a public event, it's a private event for the seniors in their place.
Are we making the seniors walk across the stage with a mask on?
Uh, no, if we can socially, if we have enough room so that I am not next to them, the school board chair and, and Mike is not next to them, that doesn't need to, we can back off and have the space, so we should be able to do that.
So they could wear, wear it to the stage, then take it off, walk across, put it back on?
Right, right.
Okay.
So they are gonna walk across the stage, 'cause we had talked about putting the diplomas in this, in the squares, you know, in the spaces for the families and for the students.
I, I.
With that part of the ceremony.
Yeah, my, my preference is to give them the, the, that, that opportunity to walk across the stage, you know, it's their moment in the front of everything in, in the limelight, so to speak.
Right, and they talk about, wanna keep everything as traditional as possible.
Yep, correct, yep. No, I'm not shaking anyone's hand or high-fiving them or anything along those major.
Right.
Okay.
So, Bill, we're, um, if, if you can just, so I, I, I think a couple of points, the board's seeing for the first time the comprehensive plan, um, some of the details I know the committee is still struggling through, can you just hit a couple of other quick highlights for us so that we know, you know, where you are, um, and, and then if the board has concerns, I think we just need to get those flushed out tonight, because, uh, you know, if June 5th sticks, notice the big capital I, F, if, um, that's two days after our next board meeting, so we don't get another bite at it, we've gotta get it, uh, we've gotta get feedback tonight.
Sure, okay, so, um, so we have then the speakers, you know, there are about eight speakers, as well as the, uh, I think the valedictorian and salutatorian, um, and most of those speaking are very short, very brief, they're just either introductions or the dedication of the yearbook or a welcome address, so those will not be lengthy. Then we have, we're making sure that we clean the microphone, wipe it off, wipe off anything on the, on the podium when a student goes up there, so we don't have to worry about that contamination there. We will then have the, um, the graduation students pick up their diploma, get a photograph at the story, at the stage, leave the stage, and the, um, the committee wants to have a class of 2020, either banner or a poster, and we're gonna give all kids a brand new shopping to sign their names to that poster. This class is not gonna have a class photograph. Every, every graduating year, we've had a class photo, so we're not gonna be able to do that. This we can at least hang somewhere in the school as a tribute to them, and maybe if we get a chance down the road at a five-year reunion, we can get enough people back in and take a picture, but right now that's not in the realm of possibilities. Okay? As far as faculty, as far as the closing or the recessional, so we'll have a recessional music playing, the faculty will walk out, go to the back of the building. When, as they're finishing walking out, the students will rise up, they will exit with their families, again, coming back in the direction that they came from, and proceed to their cars, getting in their cars. Then they'll be directed by staff to go around the back of the building and then drive back to the front of the building, uh, excuse me, around the back of the building and drive out toward the exit. We're hoping that what faculty and staff are there can sort of celebrate them socially distant as they drive by in the cars, it's that final chance to recognize them, tell them we miss you, and do that. And here's where we get the piece that's gonna be, uh, let me, I'm gonna tell you, is, um, today in our meeting, Ben. Is, um, today in our meeting, Ben Sargent was absolutely willing to, to lead a procession right on Albuquerque, down toward LMS, to circle through LMS, down through GMS, to circle through GMS, lead them back to the police station in a processional of sorts, I'm not gonna use the other P-word, to get back to the fire station, then to go about having their, uh, their celebrations.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
I think it's totally fine. GMS is already doing a reverse parade.
Yeah, one of the things I've been thinking about this with today was, wouldn't it be nice after graduation if the LMS teachers and the GMS teachers were outside, down there hanging out with their hands out, waving, dancing, celebrating?
I think they should go up and down Albuquerque.
Well, I didn't ask for up and down, I asked for down, around, and then, then, you know, having the police cruiser read it. Have a one behind it, closing it up. And if parents don't wanna do that, they don't need to do that, absolutely not. Their, their child may not have gone to LMS or GMS. But, 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 but for ho, but for those kids who this has been, another thing they've lost is just the bus ride down to GMS and to LMS and to walk through the schools in their caps and gowns. This is a little bit of a way to say hi and goodbye.
So will they be, no one's gonna stop and get out of their cars when they get back to Campbell? They'll just circle around and leave?
Circle around and leave, that's, yeah.
It's not even going back to Campbell, is it?
No, nope, it's not.
Okay.
Nope, it'll, it'll end over at the police station and then folks will be on their way.
Hey Bill?
Yes?
Or Mike, can I make one suggestion possibly? When the kids leave the stage with their diploma, if we had a camera set up on a tripod with a makeshift green screen, could we take pictures that all be at the same distance and pay a stipend to a technology staff member to make a class picture?
Yeah.
Do you play virtual?
I mean, if, if you had a green screen behind them, you can do almost anything with the pictures.
We do have a green screen.
They could do pictures of the kids in a circle kind of thing.
Yeah, if you just, and if you just took the picture, you could almost put, you could then take a picture of the bleachers and almost put them where they usually stand. If you had them at the, you know, they'll all be at the same height, they'll all be, so it'd be fairly easy to adjust and...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have a barking dog, I apologize.
Yeah, we do have a green screen. Green screen, I think it's portable.
Well, and I think, Mike, I think you can even make it out of, I've made them before in school for wee video out of just the poster paper that we use on the cork boards. Green board?
Yeah.
And, and I, I, Bill, I'd even, if you could find a staff member, I'd put a motion forward to give them, I don't know if we can add a stipend?
Yeah.
But I mean, I, I think that's important to get, you know, get a class picture up there for the unique year they've had with all the kids in it.
Yeah, there might be someone in town willing to, to volunteer their time as a, you know, photographer and, and to edit those together.
Well, and that's another piece I can talk to, um, Hawkmeier and find out, you know, if we put a green screen up there, will their cameras accommodate that? And that'll be simple enough to do. Yeah.
Bill, are you anticipating using, renting chairs for families? Okay.
Yep, so, um, we have a contract for 1,500 chairs. Well, we don't need to...
You only needed 400 chairs.
Right, and the real key business is getting the dates set in stone, you know? So that we know this is when they're going and so they're there for Friday and Saturday, um, just in case we do have a, uh, inclement weather day. Yep.
So how much time do you feel like you need beyond the last day of school for seniors to pull this together?
To be, to be comfortable, let me talk a little bit about those things real quickly. I think, uh, programming the traffic patterns and painting the field, those are a couple of days worth of work. That's not a whole lot. One, I need to get, I wanna get this approved by the DOE and Chris Bond up there, so we need to get a finished product to him at some time in the next few days. Generally, they've had a pretty quick turnaround on that, but I, I don't wanna sit here and say at this time when, when schools are all doing this, that I'm gonna get it back in a day or two.
Yeah.
I think, I think for me, I think, I think going to the 12th and 13th is better than the current push to go for the 5th and the 6th. And it still provides us an opportunity if, um, if things aren't right or if things are off or there's some serious resistance, it still provides us a little turn, a little bit of gap time. Mike and I had actually talked about if this, if this has no possibility, and I think it does have possibilities. If you look at what the DOE sent out, both in terms of parades and in terms of live graduations, they didn't rule them out completely, they just put a heavy bonus, a heavy burden on you in terms of making sure that you are socially appropriate, distance-wise appropriate.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess my, my question too was, I know that it was, it was kinda talked about is if we did, is the board okay with possibly doing 12th, 13th, or even the 14th, even though it's a Sunday? I know it's a Monday, but...
As long as our military kids are able to attend.
Yeah.
The, the other thing I would just, uh, give some feedback on is that, uh, on the sheet, we've got the 5:30, you know, the Friday night at 5:30 is the traditional time, I believe. Uh, I, I would encourage you to consider a 10:00 AM, uh, Saturday or Sunday. And, and the reason is that, if you think about it, the likelihood of the afternoon pop-up thunderstorm in June is high. That's what happens. The storm comes whipping through at four or five o'clock in the evening when it's been a beautiful day all day. Uh, you're, you're much more likely to have a disruption at that time of the day than if you anchor on a, on a 10:00 AM. 10:00 AM, it's either raining or it's not raining. It's not a, um, it's not a, gosh, it's gonna change in the next 15 minutes on us. We all know that, so...
Yeah, that won't be, won't be too hot.
The benefit of that too is that you don't, you won't have the parents who work during the week, you know, rushing out or taking time off of work to, to make it in time.
For mosquitoes.
Ooh, for mosquitoes. I think this is a great plan. I think it's...
I think so. I do too.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote for this?
Nope.
We are, right?
Okay.
We have our blessing.
Okay.
Yay, unlocked.
We're comfortable with 12th and 13th, 13th and 14th if we go to 10:00 AM.
Whatever day works, eh, Bill?
Okay.
Are you gonna do RSVPs for the staff? Because I personally will not go unless there's extra space then, because I want, you know what I mean? I love doing this stuff, but I can't in good conscience go if someone's nana can't go.
I just, actually, I was taking a peek at my inbox and I did get a question from Ben. I'll mention it now. He, he's, um, asking if there will be a, a no food policy? Because typically after the graduation requires hours of cleanup of water, empty water bottles and wrappers and things like that. Um, and with the possible contamination, that's an even riskier thought. So if we can have that added in, no food or wa, no food or water, carry in, carry out, you know, nothing is possible.
Yeah, which means we need to tighten it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, if we do that suck Saturday morning 10:00 AM graduation, we might have to allow water because if people are wearing masks and it's hot out...
Yeah, no lockdowns.
But our, but our staff is wearing gloves and everything they do these days, so I know that as we close this out at the end, they'll make sure that they are appropriate in terms of how they handle waste.
Yeah, yeah, just, just food for thought.
Nope, that's funny, funny, food for thought, good.
Ah, no food for thought.
And, and if I may just chime in, so, you know, we did not just set it for the 12th. What we said is, that's our target now, right? So if you go back to my announcement, it basically said, this is the earliest we can do it. It purposely gave us three to four weeks to be able to figure something out. But we can pull the plug just as we would on a scho, school day, right? So if police, fire, or I decide it is not safe to proceed, we will pull the plug on it. And so people just need to understand, this is gonna be very flexible. Now, having said all that, I am gonna say that June 12th is gonna be a beautiful night. It's gonna be about 70 degrees, there's gonna be a slight breeze, it'll take care of every mosquito in Litchfield, and we're gonna have a beautiful ceremony. Um, and because I said that, it's gonna happen, right? So we're set. But the point is that if conditions go otherwise, um, you know, the public just needs to realize that the four people you've got lined up to join the graduate, uh, for that five people squeezed into the, uh, the, the Jetta, um, you know, that's gonna get reversed around and maybe be on Saturday morning when somebody's not available. And that's, that's just the reality of what we're dealing with in these wicked, unprecedented and trying times, so...
Absolutely.
Great. What, you, you, uh, I commend the committee, Bill, I think you've done a tremendous amount of work. I, I think you get this up to, up to the state and, the dog likes it too. Uh, get it up to the state, get their approval on it, and so we can plug ahead and then we just keep in touch and do our best. Um, it's really, really important for our graduates.
Awesome.
Um, all right, anything else on graduation? Liz, I'm sorry, I talked over you.
Oh, no, it's fine. I'm ready, I'm, I'm thrilled, I, I'm just so happy they're getting the...
Oh, my. Thank you.
So let me shift gears then to, uh, the grading update. And so I've shared with the board, uh, what we have done with our staff and we're having ongoing dialogue and conversation with staff. We have an administrative team meeting in the morning to talk about this further. But basically, we have provided our staff with what I'm calling a guidepost. And it was a, a data-driven snapshot of where students stood at the closest point that we could get to the change from traditional bricks and mortar education to remote learning. And so that guidepost was a, a summation of, and it varies by class, but it's, it could be term one, term two, uh, midterms, term three grade, which was sort of half-done in a traditional setting and half-done in a remote setting. Um, and so we took all that and we did a calculation and it provided that to staff to say, this is where the child stood at the point where the rug got pulled out and where, uh, the dynamic shifted and changed. And we're asking our staff to use that as a guide point for them in looking at where students end up, recognizing a couple of things. Some students have thrived and done an awesome job in remote learning and that ought to be reflected in the grade that they earn. Some students have really stumbled, have really, um, not hit their stride, have, have struggled in this environment. And so staff can then be looking at where they are now, back to that guidepost, and we're asking them to be graceful in considering how to calculate that grade and how to determine where the, where the child ended. To make sure that they're thoughtful, reflective on, um, the whys, you know, what has happened in this case, um, because not all students enjoy, um, the same level of parental support, the same level of technology, um, availability. You know, there's just a variety of things that come into play with this and so we want people to be mindful of that when they're calculating the final grades. So we're not saying somebody can't be harmed. If there's somebody who will, willfully did not engage, they've earned what they've earned, um, you know, that, that's just the reality of it. But, but we need to be really thoughtful and mindful on it, um, in making that determination. So by providing staff with that number and saying, reference back to this as you make final decisions, um, we're hopeful that people will err on the side of the child whenever possible in making that determination. The other piece, Mary and I were, um, in our meetings today with staff, so we had, oh, I don't know, 50 people in our lunch meeting and another 20 people in our snack meeting. And to me, it's about, pay attention to the competency assessment. What is it you're doing at the end that tells you, did the child master the competency? And you then hop in your helicopter, you go 20,000 feet above and you look down and say, where am I gonna put this student? This is not about calculating grades out to decimal places at this point. It's about hovering above it and doing what's right for the students, um, in question. So that's, that's the challenge that we have in front of our staff and what we've asked them to do. And in all cases, to document it, because the other piece that I just wanna make clear to the board, we're spending so much time trying to figure out how to parachute out of remote learning and wrap up a very unusual year, that we have not given the attention to next year that we need to give. And I need the administrative team ready to get this year wrapped up because we've got task forces that need to meet, we're gonna have levels of planning for, and, and it's August, it's the end of August that we start back up, which means if we don't have plans ready to go at the start of August, we're behind. So, you know, we, we cannot be spending a ton of time this summer defending grades, defending, um, you know, answering a million questions about why things happen. We need to be sure that there's great clarity for our administrators to be able to resolve matters, um, so that we can then pay attention to what we have to do to open schools successfully. So that's where I am with the grading, what we've asked of our staff. I will tell you, there have been a lot of questions. Staff are nervous about, uh, you know, making decisions that are gonna be, um, accurate, I think is the key thing. They really wanna make sure that they're, they're reporting grades in an accurate way, that they're not discriminating against somebody because, you know, one family, um, you know, if the perception is that the child didn't participate in all of these activities, but then they demonstrate in the final competency assessment that they've, uh, met the competencies, I've said then err on the side of saying they met the competencies. They, they've done the work, um, they've learned the material and that's what the competency-based environment is. It's not about did they do the worksheet on a certain date in the past? You've gotta hover above it and make that decision, so... But people are struggling, I, I'll be very honest, our faculty are struggling with that notion and they, they wanna do what's right. They wanna err on the side of the kid, but they also wanna do it in a way that has professional integrity as educators. And so that's the piece that we need to continue to work on. Mike or Bill, you've been part of faculty conversations, so you, you may have more to add on it. I'm gonna add, I'm gonna add electricity to my computer, so I'm listening, but we'll be stepping out.
I think, before you guys speak, I'm sorry to cut through. I think some parents are seeing their kids work really, really, really hard and some kids who are just mailing it in would get the same grades. And I'm not talking about the kids that are struggling. I think we all know who those kids are and they've been in contact and they've reached out and we know they're struggling. I, I don't know, I'm, I don't want anyone harmed by this remote learning, but I also don't want it a free pass that you didn't participate and you still passed. Does that make sense?
It's, um, it does make sense and there's, um, there's a lot of pieces to this. You know, I've listened to Mike on a number of different occasions talking about sort of the contract we signed with our kids, which is to provide classroom teacher who's connected and who's looking them in the eye, checking them on their homework and pulling them aside. You don't have the opportunity to do those things. And that's, that's destructive to kids. It's not just, um, hard, it's destructive that they don't have that face-to-face, there's the grouchy Lonigan in there, you know, having a conversation and, and checking up on them and then running down the hall to Jody or to Jeff or to Carrie and saying, what's going on? So it's, it's become a whole lot more complicated to, for, for teachers, but really for kids.
But that is good, really too, I think you're right. Like, I think this child hasn't put forth any effort, he or she is out working full-time and choosing not to do their schoolwork. Or he or she just doesn't log on after they have a meeting with Mrs. Ellis.
Yeah, yep.
But competency-based grading, it's a matter of whether or not you meet the competencies. It's, it's whether or not you are applying the skills that you learned and the, and the content that you learned in an applicable way. It's not about how much time you've spent on assignments or how many Zoom meetings you've attended. So that's a shift in thinking towards competency-based grading that, that, you know, right now, it's kind of the only thing we can really go on because every student comes from a different home life. They have different life situations, you, you know.
How many competent?
I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
How many, please, can we demonstrate Tina then? So if, let's say your daughter does one thing to demonstrate she's competent, then all those other eight assignments she chose not to do don't count?
No, that's not true. I mean, we've also given teachers the, enough, enough lead time to reach out to the kids and say, listen, right now you're not meeting this competency. This is what I need you to do in the meantime to get back up to where you are.
Oh, I think they're totally doing that, I know that.
Right, I do too, I do, and that was what was in my direction. It's not... Right, I do too. I do. And that was what was in my direction. It's not, it's not don't reach out, don't bother, you know, kind of school where they are and everybody gets a B. So.
I'm not sure all the teachers are doing that, to be honest. I have, like, in, in my grade, I know that there have been two teachers that have reached out to my kids and there was another one that I had hoped, like, that I reached out to myself. But I know the onus is on the kids, but I do really hope that the teachers are reaching out to the kids who are struggling. And, you know, if they get, if they're not doing what they should be doing and the kids aren't reaching out to them, I do think that the teachers need to reach out. And I hope that that is happening to everybody.
So, so there's a couple of things here to talk about. I think one is, this is not every student. This is a smaller percentage of students who are falling by the wayside and totally just not vested, but were doing well previously. So that's one piece of this. Tom, Tom likes to mention the counselors and the ones, you know? There are those who struggle and really find it's really difficult for them and they're going to work hard versus the ones, the ones who are just not going to do it because school's not important, they don't value it. So, so we're talking about the ones. Okay? But we're also talking about within each of the schools, we have, even though it's not what we want it to be. We have teachers reaching out to students. We have teachers reaching out to parents. We have them, them reaching out to Jeff or to Carrie or to, and we then have Mike Perez reaching back out to them as a result. And Mike, you probably want to speak a little bit about this. That there's been incredible attempt to wrap around by the schools.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have, we have a list going. We taught, we, we talk about that list every week with the school counselors. So Carrie, Jeff, Jody, myself, Bill Hicks. So we do, and what I do is every week, every other week, I have teachers emailing me on kids who aren't responding to them. And then, so what I do is I send out emails to the student and to the parent and say, can you please get in touch with this teacher? These following teachers, they've tried to reach out, things like that. So. And those, those emails are pretty much going out probably every other week.
Are they, are they effective?
On me, anyway.
Are they, are they effective? Are they having an impact on the, on the, on the students?
Some less. No, it depends on, depends on the student.
Right, right. And, and again, in, in many cases, we're talking about a child who wasn't successful first quarter or second quarter of midterms or, I mean, and some of these kids are, but some of these kids were successful. And they're, and they're really struggling now. And Tina, as you were saying, we don't know if it's because they're working so many hours because mom and dad aren't working or mom's not working or, you know, it's a single-family household or whatever the case may be. And trying to dig into that is challenging for teachers, much less, you know, forget about, for counselors who aren't dealing with the kids in a classroom a couple of days a week or whatever the case may be. So it's not, it's not a clear and easy, you know, picture for, for the teachers to figure out how do I deal with this kid? And Mike and I, we've talked about you use your best professional judgment, taking into consideration all the information. But, but the one thing I've heard from teachers is they, they, they're concerned about their professional ethics and whether they're carrying out. If they display grace to a kid who formerly was doing okay, but is struggling now, you know? And that's, that's difficult for some of them to, to cope with.
I can definitely appreciate that at the high school level. I think, you know, each of the schools has, and, and each teacher has been one challenges based on how they, how they have, what kind of contact they've had with their kids. I know at the elementary level, the question is more, you know, can be, well, I don't know if the kid has done this work on their own. I don't know if the parents have been helping them. Some of them, the parents have been, been, you know, kind of over their shoulder getting all of their assignments done. Some of them, the kids haven't, you know, haven't engaged. It's, it varies from teacher to teacher. And I think, you know, if, if the teachers, if our teachers are professionals about it and really under, you know, do their best to understand where kids are coming from, I think, I think that professional integrity is still there, you know?
I would say at the elementary level, if you were supposed to play the drum and you don't have a drum and you're banging together two plates, it's just lost some of its, I don't know. I could see, I'm more worried about the high school level because parents are worried about their kid's GPA, they're worried about their class rank, all of those things. And believe me, I know what it's like to have anxiety. I know what it's like to struggle. And we're going through this in our district too. We're calling parents. We have, it's awful. But I really, the teachers at Campbell are very compassionate. And I think they will do the best thing and I don't, I, they will, I, I just, I think they will do the right thing. And if they think a child deserves not to pass, they will not pass them.
And, and, and the, the question is, you know, document it. Will you document it? Will you make sure at some time when I have to have a conversation in the summer or Mike has to have a conversation with the parent in the summer if I'm not around? We have to make sure that we've documented, you know, one, the activities and the processes, but then also, you know, the attempts that we've made to, to reach that child and to connect with that child.
Yeah. And, and, you know, this is one of those cases where, like Mike has said and that Dr. Jettie has said over, you know, in the past, there's a huge asterisk on the GPAs and the grades for this, for this quarter, for the entire country. It's not just unique to Lynchfield. So, you know, I think everything that we do and all of these grades that we're assigning have to, everything will be taken with a grain of salt and a little bit of grace and compassion. So, I don't know.
Yeah, that's. I think about what a report, what a report card will say for the 1920 school year. And we have some comment on there. The grades this year were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm, I'm not going to say, just they were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It has to be stated somewhere.
How would you, we're talking about a snapshot. What is this? The other schools are in quarters. Campbell's in a semester. So do you look in March?
We have a, we have a third quarter because we have the eligibility that we.
It doesn't show competencies. I know one of my children showed he was passing everything, but I'm not sure he was. Because I can't see the competencies. Oh, Tina, I can't hear you. Do you know what I'm saying, Bill?
Is that all in that rundown? That Mike, Mike shared?
Yeah. If you pull up the progress reports at the high school, it just has numbers. It doesn't have competencies or anything.
I don't, I don't see what parents see. So Liz, I'm, I'm sorry for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I'm assuming there must be a way you could see those through, through, through Infinite Campus. I just don't know how to do that from a parent view.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Liz, it looks like.
I'm good.
It looks like all of that is quarter three, semester one, everything's considered in that.
But a competency's in that third, in the third quarter on there? Cause I thought I just saw numbers.
I don't know.
Oh, but I think it's great for the, I mean, if your kid's passing music and then all of a sudden he falls apart in middle school, that's, that's what I think it's there for.
Will there be, is there like an incomplete?
Yes.
Ooh, I like that.
Yep. So teachers have the discretion to, to provide students an incomplete at the end of, at the end of a term. And typically a student has two weeks to recover, to make up what work was missed, to, to figure those pieces out. It's a little bit more challenging at the end of the school year because teachers often go away for the summer. So, so the makeup work may get done. But sit in the bin, you know, a digital bin, so to speak, until the teacher comes back in the fall to, to address that. But they can, absolutely.
Okay.
And we've talked about that in classes. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I just, the one thing that sticks in my mind is Bill having to say there needs to be a disclaimer about 2020 and COVID. That goes right to the heart of the whole issue of having no harm grading. If you need to point that out, then there's a problem.
Yeah, absolutely, Rob. I don't disagree with you on that. I, I, I don't know. I mean, I think as somebody who's an, as an academic, you know, grades are supposed to be, they're supposed to be meaningful. They're supposed to represent something for a kid. And in some way.
We've all had kids who are good, I mean, I hate to say it, good at school.
Yeah.
Who aren't going to adjust to this well. And we've had kids that aren't quote unquote, good at school, who are going to kill that. And it's, I think, I think Mike hit it right where we have to be, I'm not somebody who uses the word compassion a lot, but you have to really take into account when you're grading this, that everybody's struggling in different ways. I mean, I, I won't get into it, but I heard from a parent today whose, whose kid is sleeping in the spare bedroom next to them. After he goes to bed at night, they wake up every morning, he's in the spare bedroom and he's been crying because he's worried about his grandparents and they didn't find out for weeks. And it's, we don't know what's going on in a lot of these cases. It's just, that's what worries me a bit is what, what are we going to find out two weeks, two months, two years from now that was impacted by this?
And I, I think someone, someone said, I think, Mike, you said it, Bill, you've definitely said it. You know, we're going to trust, we're trusting their professional judgment as teachers.
I agree.
And I think that, you know, I know Bill, Bill and I have been trying to tell our teachers that we're, we're trusting them as professionals to make the professional decisions that they have to make.
They're still the ones that know the kids the best.
I think, I think back to the kid in my class who was, who was just difficult and problematic and didn't cooperate and was disruptive and has a 79.4. He really struggled for the 79.5. But, but, but that kid who's working real hard and isn't doing great and, and, but is, and you know who those kids are because you have a chance to deal with them and speak with them. And that 79.4 for that kid is a homework assignment that I missed or that I used my professional judgment on that. And that's part of what teaching is about sometimes is, is about using the professional judgment to, to make some of those determinations, you know?
And, and, and keeping in mind that, you know, you're, you're talking a point four versus a point five, we're not measuring temperature. You know, it, there's no absolute. And, you know, I always exercise grace because as I was grading, you know, here's a 10-point chemistry analysis problem. I'm rewarding partial credit. So why did I give a six versus a seven? I mean, I did my best in trying to have a scheme of, of what was worth what. But, you know, when you look at the sum total of all of those decisions I had made, I erred on, I might've goofed on one of those or somewhere along the line. And that could be that decimal point. So again, that's the professional judgment that I have to be able to exercise in the end with integrity. I mean, I can't just, you know, the example I gave in our, in our conversation was we had, this goes way back to my, I was still teaching. We had a teacher who was ticked off and her solution to being ticked off at the world as she was leaving was to give every kid an A. She didn't do anybody a favor. She didn't do anybody a favor by, you know, having that. That was unprofessional. That wasn't the right answer. But you couldn't unring the bell once it was entered into the system. So. This is about recognizing that I have to have integrity, but I also have to err on the side of the child. Now is the time to get in that helicopter and go to 20,000 feet and just examine it and say, what do we have? This is where the kid was. This is where we landed. What's right in all of this? They'll do it. They'll do, they'll rise to it. There's no doubt in my mind. We just provided them a data point that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So they now have it. All right. Anything else on the grading piece? Cause I want to cross it off the update list too. So if, if the board had other questions or thoughts on it. Just a, a, a quick reminder that we've stayed the course with the grading. So the high school is still giving, giving letter grades the way they traditionally have. Some districts have gone to pass fail grading. We've stayed out of that. I think there's too many questions that that raises. So we're, we're staying the course and trusting our professionals, same at the middle school and the same at GMS. So the, the systems are all still intact and our faculty are armed with more info than they've had.
How will parents know if the grades are adjusted? Will the parents know?
No. Do they need to?
No. But if Suzie's failing Spanish now and she had a 90 back in March, I'm hoping that she wouldn't fail it. That's what I think of no harm grading.
But so a, a, any parent is going to be able to calculate. You can look at term one, term two, midterms. You can eyeball it and say, this is about where my kid stood, whether we provide them the guidepost or not. They can, any savvy parent can get pretty darn close to what that data shows. And then here's where they landed. What's the impact on the final grade and say, timeout a second here, you know? Here's, here's the bigger picture. And what I'm hoping is we've asked our teachers to document it using existing tools. So, you know, I might expect a little bit more of a narrative in Infinite Campus now because you're just providing a little more info. I would expect that administrators would see more in a parent communication log because that's what we've been doing, right? So when the child asks that question about that trial, and I'm not saying they can't slip. If they did nothing, if they just stopped speaking Spanish and said, I'm not participating any longer, the grade's going to suffer, Liz. That's the reality of it because other kids didn't do that. But it needs to be documented why that occurred and what interventions were done. You know, because I think, again, we've got to err on the side of the child. It's, it's not, you know, I taught the material and, and you didn't engage in it. No, it's, I, I gotta be pulling you along. This is the time, if ever, there is to be pulling kids through knot holes, kicking and screaming if they need to, but this is the time to be doing it.
I think I've just caught up on the third progress report, just having a number and not having competency grades. So if Suzie's failing Spanish now and she was failing it third quarter, the parent wouldn't know.
Oh, you're saying that you saw a number grade that was passing, but there were competencies behind it that were not being met?
Right. That's what the third quarter progress report looks like at Campbell High School. But I'm just throwing that out there. I, I, I'm, I'm not worried for my children. I just worry for future questions.
Yep, understood.
I think Bill and Mike know exactly what I'm talking about. So I give it back to you. Parents can't see competencies on third quarter.
Okay.
Third progress, second, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Zoe.
All right. If we're, if we're good on grading, I've hit, we're still under superintendent comments, you realize? So. I'm going to see if anybody has anything else for Bill and Mike. They're welcome to stay, but my hunch is they'll take an exit opportunity provided to them. So is anybody else?
I can't do it, sorry.
All right. So I'm, I'm, my comments are done. So it's on to the board. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you for everything. It's hard on you guys, too.
All right. So now that'll bring us the school board comments.
I have none for once. Well, we went over a lot of information. I'm really happy that the graduation's working out. We're going to read some of the kids that are really struggling. You have any concerns, Chloe? How are you doing? You and Trav? Doing okay?
I'm doing pretty good. What's really helpful is like, teachers are pretty lenient about like late work. So if something's like a couple of days late, they don't deduct any points or anything, which has actually been really helpful because there was one week where I had like four projects due. So I just had to put my smaller assignments aside to just get those projects done.
I think that's great in this time. I think that helps anxiety for, at all grade levels. That's awesome.
Well, hopefully, Liz, it's.
That is not 100% true for all classes, just so you know. Yeah, or grades.
And Liz, hopefully it becomes standard practice since it's competency-based, not turning in on time.
Right. That's the thing. It's competency-based grading, you know? You get, you get graded off what you know and what you, what you apply, not when you did it. So. But I've noticed that too, Chloe. I, it's, that has been a help too. I just wanted to do that if, if any, any student or any parent out there is, is having trouble with a course or not, has questions or concerns, the best thing you can do is reach out to that teacher. Students especially, advocate for yourselves. If you, if you need more time on something, email the teachers. They are responsive to that. And, and reaching out to individual teachers is the most direct route and will hopefully solve the, the problem first and foremost.
Any other school board comments? There are none. We have, we would rest, we already timed in a few things. So I don't know if they have anything else they want to add. Neither? Neither? All right, that'll bring us to the forum.
I don't have any more emails. So that's it. It's a light night.
It's what?
It's a light night.
Then I'll bring us to, we have public minutes from May sixth, twenty twenty for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May sixth.
Tyra made the motion. Tina, second. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Tina?
Aye.
Tyra?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Rob?
Rob is just coming back in the room. We're voting to approve the May sixth meeting.
Rob's an aye and Brian is an aye, so five zero zero, motion passes. Next, we have the business administrator's report.
So I sent, I did send a second email that had the financial, that had, they are in the business administrator's report, but there's additional information in there. Like the entire sheet was printed in there, so I resent the one.
There was no attachment to what you just sent, Corey.
He sent another one.
He did, all right.
There's a second one come through, so basically, so items to consider. So I, there's a sheet that I've also, that has also been set, called the, the project purchase review. With the team and looking through the FY twenty, FY twenty-one budgets, we went and identified different projects. Things that were considered in the FY twenty-one budget, things that weren't budgeted for that would like to look at doing. So we can take a walk through, after some equipment for facilities, outdated equipment, one was identified in the twenty-one budget, and then I update and check uh, check the status, assess the status of what's in the other buildings, and he came back with a couple of pieces that would be needed. Exterior door locks, that goes into the new master key system, which is kind of flowing off of the warrant article that, that started the re-coring down at LMS. Just trying to get the entire district on, on one system. And one consistent system in regards to safety. Reassessing the, the need for the night lock barricade system where a certain silo lock might be, might make more sense to go through all three buildings and get, get taken care of. North End Lock Bay, which needs some serious help. The dugout roofs at, at CHF, those were quick in the budget, we're gonna have that reestimated because the twenty-four thousand, we're gonna look exactly what that, that project would entail. And then other things that we went through the report, if we go back to the last school board meeting, certain things that were brought forward by the athletic director are things that he would like to be done for the graduating spring athletes. And bringing some consistency to certain uniforms. On here also is a mobile bleacher idea for the stadium field. I put that in as a twelve thousand dollar amount. There's, I'm waiting on a, on a quote from Josh in order to see exactly what size type he's looking at. They, they offer them in aluminum or galvanized steel. See which one makes, makes more sense and gets an idea of exactly what he's looking for. What's not included on this list is, as me and, me, Mike and Michelle met the other day to discuss some, the list of capital items that we're looking for for the capital improvement plan. Something that came up that I wasn't aware of previously was the, the condition of the locker room flooring at LMS. The epoxy floors are losing their, losing their adhesiveness. So that would add an additional forty thousand dollars to this listing. Below that, I just listed the warrant article amount. What would be coming from the, the fund balance of what was raised through taxation six and seven. Warrant article six and seven were through taxation, warrant article five is going to be that expendable trust for our feasibility study. And then under that is the F one, FY twenty-one project, and we looked through items that Dave had identified down at GMS. That those areas are worn and there's certain things that, that we've been doing on a, on a year-to-year process, take small bites out at that school each year. The items that are up for replacement, we could get a couple more years out of. So as we plan for our goal, the things such as throwing another twenty-seven thousand dollars into the abatement of possessive, which is encapsulated and safe. We could use that for other, other things to get out. So that basically, that goes through that list, if there's any questions from the board, that we can absolutely discuss further.
I, I kind of felt like some of those are nice to have items that, you know, I, I, I don't necessarily feel like we need right now. I'm, I'm very concerned about whatever, whenever we reopen of making sure that we have PPE for our staff members, if, for the students if we're required to have it. Hand washing stations, touchless paper towel, touchless soap dispenser, just little things like that that will make a big difference, more supplies for cleaning and sanitation and disinfectants, I mean, those kinds of things we're, we know we're going to need when we do open up our buildings again. Is this, I mean, if, if we're saving, we're cutting eighty thousand dollars of projects from GMS, can we put that into paper towel dispensers and hand sanitizers and hand washing equipment and, and things like that that we know we're going to use and frankly, are, are, are an easy sell? Because it's about the safety of the kids. I'm still not entirely clear why the bleachers were kind of abandoned by the boosters. I thought, I thought that was part of their long-term planning and that they were gonna pay for those.
Too expensive. They realized it was way too much money, we're taking them way too long to collect the money, so that's why. Cause they, they're envisioning ones that are full bleachers.
Yeah. Why wouldn't they be willing to pay for these mobile bleachers?
I thought they, Tina, I thought they said a few meetings ago that they had reconsidered because they had spent so much on the outdoor sports and hadn't done much for the indoor sports.
That's exactly what, what was communicated to me by Josh, is that they've spent a lot of time with the, with the press box, they want to be able to focus more on the indoor sports, that doesn't look like they're just focusing on football.
And I get that, I just, I caution, I caution the board against, you know, how it's going, the optics of it. You know, it looks like we have this extra money, so let's buy some bleachers.
I, I, so that way, I, I think these are a lot of things that did, that use improvement. I mean, you, you take the bleachers that are on hand at that field to begin with, they have inspections a year ago. And are unsafe.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't sit on them, you can't have, there's other things that, that we're potentially looking at as well in terms of, you know?
I guess, I guess, I don't, I don't mean to pick apart the bleachers, I just, I feel like there are more areas that we would be smart to buy ahead for next year, knowing that next year's gonna look very different and there're gonna be new guidelines and, and new guidance from the state and
So Tina, that, that, that brings, that brings me to the question that I have, because I went through the budget for twenty twenty-one, like I asked everyone else to do, and I'm not sure if everyone had a chance or not. But just add one thing to your, like, hand washing stations and paper towel dispensers and so on. I think we're at the, the stage right now where sanitary wipes shouldn't be asked for by parents. I think the school needs to stop supplying disinfectant wipes for all classes all the time and have them readily available. We don't have to rely on, you know, hey, you know, if you're looking for school supplies, here's what we can use. So that's just a tidbit. My, my question is, and I'll probably have to take this conversation offline with Mike and Corey, but how much money are we talking right now that we're looking, I know we want to offset tax increase. So with that amount, what amount are we, we referring to? If I, it was one point something million, correct, that I'm looking at, we have leftover?
Right now, my estimate is the total fund bal, total fund balance of one point three million. Two hundred thousand, two hun, uh, yeah, yeah, two hundred and thirteen nineteen thousand dollars is going to the capital reserves that were approved in March.
So there's still one, one?
Three hundred thousand dollars available for encumber.
I'm sorry, how much?
Three hundred thou, about three hundred thousand dollars available to encumber while still returning the seven hundred and ninety thousand to offset taxes.
You want to return, seven ninety? That's the only return?
If we return, if we return seven ninety, it would, it would philosophically offset the taxes that there wouldn't be an increased offset bill in the fall.
Okay. So we only have an additional sixty thousand dollars aside from this list that we can spend not to do anything as far as taxes?
Well, but the GMS projects that we had budgeted, that would, that's eight, another eighty thousand, right? If we, those?
But is it really, the question is, is we really need to build those few projects at GMS? If, down the road, we're looking at a new school?
No, what I'm saying is we don't need to, but if we cancel that, those were things that were budgeted for next year. And then that frees up, if we don't do them, that frees up that eighty thousand, right?
Right, but it frees up that eighty thousand, but goes in at two sixty above it.
Right.
So we're talking like forty to sixty thousand dollars additional.
But let's, if you
I didn't realize that that was the
Tina was talking, oh, sorry.
You keep like coming out.
Oh, Tina was talking about the bathroom? Like all of our paper towel dispensers are touch, I'm sorry, I'm touching. We need hands, we, those things can't be cheap, the hands reading ones?
They're cheap, they're cheap, it's nothing money.
The hand blowing ones?
What?
The hand blowing ones are cheap?
No, you get
No, just swipe your hand and get a free paper towel ones are cheap.
You don't get the air blow dryers. They're less sanitary.
We have them.
Yeah, we have them at VFR too. But the soap dispensers, you know, the touchless soap dispensers, you've got little rubbing wet hands touching the soap dispensers to get soap out. Fossils would be great, but I know that's
So we, we, we had a conversation about hand washing stations because we were trying to sort that through, we just don't see the feasibility to it, and let me, let me explain it. First of all, you know, unless you have a big massive station, you're really limited to one or two students at a time. You also have hand drying that has to go along with it, so it's the wash and the dry cycle. And trying to figure out how to install, so let me just talk GMS. GMS is a nightmare of a building, as you know. So we had talked about, well, I guess we'd have to pull a drinking fountain off the wall in order to have plumbing. And then we have to run a hot water because we have cold water running to it now, so we'd have to have the ability to mix hot and cold that properly wash your hands. And then the idea that you'd be bringing students in to be able to go through that station, so we fell back on hand sanitizer stations with, you know, the, the the touchless, you just put your hand out and get a squirt of the stuff so that you can do this and then let it drip dry as a more practical, efficient way to work your way through it. Because we just don't know how to do it at GMS. Especially before lunch, I mean, to me, that's the key time. I'm gonna go in, I'm now gonna touch my food, I'm touching the table. And so to have everybody wash their hands with antibacterial soap and dry and get in line, you know, it's just gonna be a real, actually, hang on one second. They're telling us that we'll be no, no longer, we'll be able to go through a, a serving line, right? So the new normal is serving lines are out the window. You've gotta have grab and go lunch packages for students, so that's another piece that, you know, just factor all that in.
Right.
It's really a game changer, it really is. So unless somebody has an idea on hand washing stations, but when Dave, Corey and I were going through it. Yeah, what is it?
Put them out in the playground, run the water from the kindergarten portables. Put like a bank of four temporary little sinks with little soap dispensers and kids have to wash their hands before they line up at some point during recess.
You can rent those.
We, we talked about that, that was the one way that we said, because they're coming from the playground, having the hand washing stations outside. Awesome idea until it's winter. Because, you know, now
Well, they're not playing on the playground anyway in the winter.
They're just keeping the germs inside.
So that, that
I, I totally understand that, that was the one caveat I thought of too. But it, who said something about you can rent them? Just like a bank of sinks?
You can rent them, WMUR, I have a picture of one, MUR has them.
Might be worth looking into. I do think with
Tyra, can you send that to me and Corey? That'd be great.
That's a good idea. I know everything's gonna be different next year, but I, you know, the more, I feel like some, if, you know, we don't, we might have to be, we might have to provide masks for our teachers, masks for the kids, potentially. And then there's all this, you know, I know we can't encumber personnel, but I have a feeling that we're gonna need a lot more bodies next year.
If we do split sessions, we'll, it'll be just completely different and remote.
You are the only participant in this conference. Press any key to continue this conference. The conference will now continue.
I'm sorry, the, so we're required to have the phone, but there's nobody actually on the phone, so we're just wanting to see if we wanted to hang up, but we can't hang up, so we're good.
The top, the top section of my list would be for, is a hundred thirty thousand plus the forty for the LMS flooring. I'm looking at about three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. So that was, that's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to spend ahead for those type of things if you wanted to. There's nothing set in stone saying that if, if we return seven ninety, yeah, it keeps the the tax rate stable, but you also have the ability, which is, would be a great thing to do for the community. But you could also make it a minimal, minimal increase for people and spend a little additional money out of it. There's, there's options and we can park that out as we, as we tune and the, the picture really, you know, shores up.
I personally, I think that the, what would you say, one thirty? On preparing for increased sanitation and hygiene and personal protection in each of our schools makes sense.
Yeah, we can look into that, we can look into, would you be saying like converting all the hands-free paper towels and soap dispenser faucets and all that stuff? I can have Dave look into that, bring his, bring his guys in, I think to look into that. You can order a lot of that stuff and our guys can install it. So there wouldn't be an installation fee, the only thing that would be different is probably the faucet work, we'd probably have to have a plumber to do that. We can certainly, we can certainly look into that.
I think before you look at, which is any type of PPE product? I mean, I just, I agree as far as the towels and the soap dispensers, we can go ahead and change those to hands-free, but I think as far as PPE, we have no idea what the government's gonna do. If we're going back to schools that they require gloves, that, that, most likely they'll supply or give you some kind of grant for it. I wouldn't spend a head on anything like that at this point. We don't, cause it's uncertain, we don't know what's going on.
Yeah, what about additional cleaning mater, like machines? Cause they're gonna get more use than they've ever gotten, probably. I know you have the scrubber on there, but they're
They're still, they're, they're still wash the floors as often as they wash the floors.
Right, it's the disinfecting stuff that, you know, daily classroom tabletops, doorknobs, windows that teachers do predominantly now.
Well, back to what I said, Tina, about having bacteria wipes, not like, you know, waiting for you just sending a package
Donations, right?
Right. Let's, let's just have them.
I haven't seen them in ages. I haven't seen them, you know, in a long time.
I know.
Do we provide our teachers, we don't provide our teachers with any like spray disinfectants to clean tables or anything like that, right?
I think upon, I think on
What's that for you, I'm sorry?
Things that don't request.
If you ask for it, they give it to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, Tina, we, we prefer to provide what we know that we have the, uh, material data sheets on than everybody bringing in their own home remedy for that, so.
Yeah.
Home remedy.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, we don't even make decisions this evening on, on these items, so everyone can take a look at them, we can even discuss at our next meeting. If there's something we think we should take out, something we should add, something that, you know, is more relevant that should be in there, then we can take a look at. But Corey, in the meantime, I, I think Tina brings up a great point. Let's look into what the cost would be for like paper towel dispensers, soap dispensers at least. And help, and I know there's gonna be a cost effect with that also, because, you know, especially at GMS, the, the soap is gonna go flying in the paper towels. So there'll be additional costs involved.
The other thing to keep in mind is that the, the dispensers, Brian, I think you're right, the companies will, because you're then locked into buying their, uh, paper towel, right? So they'll almost give you the device, the devil is in the batteries, as any parent knows. Um, you know, we're gonna be going through D cells like crazy on those things, so that's where we will take on some expense and we have to plan for it.
Yep.
So Corey, I did have a question about the painting of the cafeteria at CHS. I know that, um, our parents have given a list of things to do, our maintenance folks are working to try to get ahead. Is that a function that they could do themselves, like the maintenance folks over the summer since potentially if they've moved ahead and they don't have two buildings to completely clean? Um, you know, is that something they have the skill to do?
It's very possible, definitely something to look into.
Tara, I, I missed the opening point, which project is it to get after the?
The painting of the CHS cafeteria?
It, it depends, I know. I know that Lauren has a particular, I board the cap and I don't know if it involves the I don't know, type of design, uh, with, in, in terms of the school. Um, I have to review what, what she's looking to do. Uh, in that case, if there is some kind of design work, if it's a simple one or two colors, yeah, I don't have any problem with the cat house doing it. Um, but if it's something that's a little more involved and includes a design or something, school spirit relevant, um, it, it might be better to have a professional do it.
Right, definitely, if there's a design, but even just painting the primary color around the cafeteria and then hiring somebody to just do the design.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we were on.
I wouldn't be surprised.
On, um, what do you call it, cleaning supplies and everything, is there a plan to get all of our school books in? I found a, a mockingbird book, you know, Lamont, like when are parents dropping this stuff off? Are they gonna do them in bins, like my school, you drop them off in a bin and then they push them aside for a week so they get all the germs and everything off them? We still have a lot of school material out there, biology books, reading.
Well, I know the high, I know the high school has three bins outside, at least three bins for collection. So I'm not sure if you, does it do or stay?
Let me double check in the morning, Liz.
I was just curious, I mean, I've, in Hudson, they're doing a reverse parade and the kids are dropping off their that day, that the principal will be wearing gloves and a mask and taking the books and pu- and everything. Just a thought, this, I was just curious, because I mean, those books aren't cheap to replace, all those little books that you, the kids read.
Right.
Okay, done. Or complete, cleaning computers. Are we responsible for cleaning the kids' laptops or Chromebooks or?
They're ours.
Ugh.
You don't return them, well, the seniors do, but.
Well, the se- the.
The senior, remember?
Yep.
For the seniors.
Oh, okay.
They're worthless, you know, they're worth something to them, they're not worth anything to us.
Right.
I haven't heard about the bins, Mike, and if you could send like a, the schools could send out a collection notice?
Yep.
Like something like, I could start collecting, I'm sure Tara and Brian, you probably have stuff all over your house. Trevor, do you have anything left at your house, Trevor, I bet I can find something in there.
I have a few books at my house, yeah.
Strawball for you graduate, you won't get that diploma.
We know, we know, Trevor, we have a list, don't worry, we have a list.
All right. Let's move on to old business terms.
Yeah, so, uh, just quickly, the grading update, I think we're set on, we covered that in depth. Graduation plan, obviously, fall school reopening plans. Um, so let me just, uh, remind the board that we surveyed, um, students, parents and staff relative to their thoughts on next fall. The question, so the board knows, uh, actually came from another superintendent in a neighboring or nearby district, I guess, not technically a neighbor, a South Central District. Um, and I said, well, let me see if I get similar results if we just surveyed people. And we did, uh, our results actually mirrored the other district's results. Um, and so I just want to, you think about a couple of things. About a quarter of our faculty are reporting that they really are not comfortable returning regardless of what we do. Um, that, you know, again, keep in mind, people have their own underlying health issues or health issues in the family. There are a lot of unknowns relative to what this all looks like come fall. Um, so we've got about a quarter of the faculty are saying, I don't know that you can make it safe, I don't know that there are enough wipes that would make it so that I feel comfortable coming back to school and being in that environment, so that's, that's a factor to keep in mind. About a third of our parents are saying they're not gonna send their kid back, they don't feel that we can provide a safe environment. Um, and that even with, um, you know, split sessions or changing, uh, things around, we've got about thirty percent, thirty-three percent who are saying, I, I, I don't think it's right for my kid to come back until, I'm guessing here, you know, there's some higher level of safety, like everybody's been vaccinated and now, you know, we can come back into the environment, so. Um, I think that presents for us a challenge as a public school system. Um, because we also have parents who, uh, very vocally said, look, I gotta go back to work, I need my kids in school. Um, and I'm gonna depend on the public schools to provide that for us, uh, because, you know, life is gonna pick back up by fall, we predict, and you know, we're gonna be back to work, and so we need to make sure that the school system is up and running in order to sustain us, so. Um, so there's our challenge. Now, you have, just a reminder to the board, those surveys are actually done out of the board shared drive, so you can go in, take a look at the surveys, the results are there, they're numbered, parent, you know, it'll be parent survey one, two, three and four. Same thing for staff and students, so you can always go back and read those comments, they're available for you there, all right? If you have trouble accessing that, let me know, but I think it's in the, um, the school board meeting folder. And then you'll just see outside of the meeting dates, there's, um, the, the surveys are there available to you if you scroll down, all right? Um, and a couple of other things to point out, I think that we we need to get our task force for reopening up and running pretty soon. Um, because we're really gonna have July to figure this out. And if we don't have a framework and some dialogue begun, it's gonna present a challenge for us. Um, so we're gonna get this up and going fairly soon, I'm assuming we'll have board representatives participating in that. Um, because it's, it's gonna be a, a, an important conversation. Um, what I'm worried about, and I'm gonna say this, that if you look at the commissioner's reopening task force that is meeting in Concord, and they're gonna provide guidance and, and, uh, information for us, which will be perfect, because we'll be able to take that info coming from the state and then with local control, figure out what works in Litchfield and how to proceed. Um, but if you look at that task force, it's really about fifty percent public schools and about fifty percent charter schools um, and, and private schools. And what I worry about is that if we do not exercise a degree of being able to adjust and adapt to what is coming, the charter schools are going to do it, they're going to figure out how to provide, um, you know, if thirty percent of our families are saying they're not comfortable sending a kid back and we don't come up with a way to educate for that thirty percent, then a charter school's going to provide that option. And frankly, with remote learning, a family's not going to be worried about whether they are participating in a Litchfield public school or a charter school that is located somewhere else in the state, so. Um, and what that means is we're gonna lose students, because they'll unenroll from us to enroll in the charters. There'll be an expansion of charter opportunities and, um, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in a pickle, because we're talking, if, if I'm right at, at a third, we're talking four hundred students who are going to exercise other options and it's gonna be, it's, it's a major game changer for us as a public school system, so. I wanna say that now, now is the time for us to work with our associations to figure out how do we grow and adapt, um, in this environment, because we're gonna have to be, uh, competitive as people are trying to figure out what I think is an unstable year, I think next year, what was the number I saw this morning, that they're hoping to have, you know, a certain number of vaccines up and going by January, February, and the amount of time it will take in order to, um, have two hundred million vaccines available will, will be really throughout next summer. Um, and so we need to be recognizing that next year is a big question mark, so.
Mike, I think you, you hit the nail on the head, and I don't mean to jump in, we're not just talking about kids coming to school, we're talking about teachers who won't be coming back, will, will be able to do remote learning alongside regular classroom teachers. What about busing if we have to socially distance? Should we put less kids on a bus? What about childcare? It would be a nightmare for working parents to have their kids come to go to school on Monday, Tuesday. There are so many pieces that it's gonna be, it's gonna, I mean, what, go ahead, Tina, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I was wondering if you were looking for a board rep for that task force. Um, I would love to do it if, if nobody else, if, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Um, I'd love to be a part of that planning committee.
Oh, nobody else is.
I know I sign up for all the committees.
I, I could do it too, or fill in or whatever, whatever.
Yeah, I'm interested, I'm interested too. One model that I know the state is taking is that there's one primary group and different subcommittees, um, for different areas of expertise and maybe that's an opportunity for other board members to participate in at some level, rather than just having one board member.
Yeah.
The be the primary.
I think on, on this type of committee, you may want more than one board member, obviously you don't want more than three, maybe.
Right.
Or you don't want three, but I think two would be sufficient, I think more than.
So, so we, we looked at the state model, you know, um, and I would have directors lead kind of sub, or work groups maybe is the right term to use. And board members could be on various work groups, so that you'd never have a quorum, but you could certainly weigh in on how all those pieces come together.
Love it.
And so, yes.
I would like to see something like that.
So.
Even like teachers could take a year off with their, use all their sick time, I'm assuming, or yeah, there's so many things that could, I, yeah. Sorry, I'm getting depressed.
It's, um, it, it's, it's overwhelming, it really is.
I think, I think we all need to take a piece of it. I just, I mean, we do.
It, it, and it's just all the, all the nuances of it, I mean, you know, all of us want nothing more than to just go back to normal, just be done with this. But the reality is the virus is in control and, you know, we're not, and so we have to adapt to the cert, you know, this, the hand we're dealt. So what are we gonna do with this hand, how are we gonna get ourselves through next year? Um, and honestly, I, you know, trying to figure out how to exit this year, I said it al- already, but that's taken a tremendous amount of time for us to work our way through. We really need to all cooperate and pull together now, um, in order to come up with a game plan for next year. You know, we implemented a procedure today, um, where anybody coming into our buildings now has to do a check-in station, um, answer a series of questions, are you feeling well, is everybody in your household well, et cetera? We have purchased, um, contactless thermometers so that we can measure temperature. Um, we're not asking anybody to record their temperature, we are saying, is your, is your temperature over a hundred degrees? Cause that seems to be the, the tipping point that the CDC has said you need to do a follow-up if you hit a hundred. Um, and so we're providing people with that tool and asking them when they come to work and when they leave work to complete the form. Cause people are with us for eight plus hours, um, so, you know. And I will tell you, we're getting tremendous, um, pushback from our employee groups, because they feel that it's not appropriate to be doing this and, um, you know, I'm sorry, but we're in the middle of a pandemic and we have an obligation.
I think all responsible employees are, are doing that right now.
There, I, I just have to say, Mike, I was getting a little worked up last night, the thought of a governor telling a teacher she has to wear a mask in my classroom is ninety degrees, and I certainly know some of the classrooms at Campbell High School with the computers going and the kids, different kids in a room, wearing a mask when the classroom's ninety degrees? There's gonna be all sorts of health issues, I, I, it's gonna be ugly.
I think that's why it's important to have teachers on the task force.
Yes.
They're in the classrooms on the front lines, they can say, there's no possible way I can put my desk six, sixty feet apart. You know, I can't have a classroom of, of eighteen kindergartners, you know, all at the same time. So I think that's, that's important, that they have a chance to weigh in, and, cause they'll think of things that we, that if you haven't been in a classroom, you haven't thought of.
Right, and full disclosure, when kids do come back, sorry, your kids are gonna take their mask off when they're eating. Yeah.
Well, so I, I, I appreciate that the board appreciates how complicated this is. Um, that we're doing everything we can to provide the right structure and framework, we have to get after it. But boy, I'm getting, I, I, you know, I, I need our admin team to be able to get a break in June, I mean, vacation is important. Stepping away from this year will be very important to us. And then coming in in July, ready to buckle down and get some serious work done, um, you know, is gonna be just critical. And it's, there's no easy answer to any of this, it's just gonna be different, so. Um, all right. Moving on just quickly, so, uh, food services, um, you can see the report from Lauren on the number of meals that we've been serving. Um, and, you know, if the board has any questions, but, you know, our numbers continue to be, uh, pretty strong, I mean, last, last week's numbers were one seventy-seven, uh, individual students who were, um, served a total of seven hundred and sixty-six meals, so. Uh, we continue to have a good process for our food service operation. Um, you know, keep in mind that, uh, revenues are off because, you know, we are getting reimbursed by the state, but it's not exactly the same scenario, so you know, just be mindful of that this could be an area that we're gonna have to pick up, uh, this year. Um, when, to balance it all off in the end, so I just wanna acknowledge that now. Um, that keeping everybody fed and the program going doesn't mean that it's breaking even. And my last thing, oh, it was hand washing stations, which we already hit, so, uh, and thank you, Tara, I see a text from you, so that's, that's a plus.
That brings us on to the fill your twenty-two budgets to schedule update.
Yep, so, uh, you, you've got a copy of the budget committee's proposed dates. Um, Tina and Brian, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but we've had a conversation. The one piece that I just want the board to be aware of is, uh, the budget committee is having a conversation about January sixteenth. I know it's way out there, but, um, January sixteenth is the Saturday of Martin Luther King Weekend. And, um, that's when the budget committee is contemplating having the budget hearing for the town and the school. Um, and so instead of doing on, sorry?
I said, I don't think it's a good date.
No, we've, we, just so the board knows, we have, uh, said this to the chair, um, but the chair is bringing it forward to the budget committee and we'll have the budget committee make a decision. Uh, but we've all voiced a concern about, uh, a three-day weekend and having it on a Saturday. Um, it'll be very difficult for us to have staff, uh, there, families will be away. Um, and so Tina, if you can just try to drive that point home.
Yeah, that it's, it's more an issue of our staff members being there to answer questions, right? Yeah, that it's, it's more an issue of our staff members being there to answer questions, right, than us. Or attendance being an issue.
I, I think it's attendance overall. I don't think it's just staff. I think it's everyone.
Well, I mean, nobody ever goes anyway. So I've been there the last three years and the community attendance is virtually none. But yeah, I mean, comparative wise.
And remember, that's not deliberative. That's the budget hearing. So that's the Thursday night thing. But you, you're right. It's, it's, it's not greatly attended. But I, I think the thought is, do we get a better attendance on a Saturday than we do on a Thursday night? But if that's the case, I'm, I'm not sure a three-day weekend when people are, who knows, maybe there'll be some degree of normal by then that people are trying to get away. So just, yeah, keep that in mind.
Yep, I'll mention it in our meeting next week.
All right. And then the last.
Birthday.
Sorry?
My mom's big birthday. I'm not going. Sorry.
And then the last thing is on co-curricular stipends. So I, I can't see the agenda, but do you have a link? Is it livened up, Michelle?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Tina and I wrote all over it.
Okay. So this was the committee, we brought back the board's questions. The committee went through, did their work, and this is the final work product of the committee. We need to, so the LEA has approved it. So they ratified this as their, their recommendation going forward. And it needs a board vote to become part of the CBA, to become part of the collective bargaining. So if there's quite, I can't see the writing, Liz, so I, I can.
About the comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just can't shut the computer off to do that because I'm driving the meeting. So.
Way more than me.
Okay. Rob just.
Question about the team leader for special services at GMS and whether that would be a good thing to have at each of the other schools. Devin kind of answered that. The, there were, there were a few positions that were highlighted in purple.
Yep.
The Saturday detention, the weight room and LMS athletic. So I wondered why they were purple and what's happening with those.
They were purple because they're special assignments and they're paid hourly. So they're not tiered. So it was just highlighting those as, so the others are stipends. Like this is the amount and it's set by a tier based on the hours that a, an advisor has contact with the students, but those are hourly special assignments. So it comes out of the same pool.
We had, we had birched the idea of Josh Knight being AD for LMS as well. Eliminating the correct, thus athletics coordinator from the stipend from LMS and having Josh do that.
We had that conversation and there was, there was, I'd have to get back to you on that one now, Tina. There was a rationale as to why that was not recommended when push came to shove. It was a teaching assignment.
So if we're going to stay on the LMS athletic coordinator, there are two that do it. So they, do they split that amount?
Correct. That's split between two.
I still have a concern with that long-term for all the stuff about concussion testing. I mean, the, the middle school coaches still have to take concussion testing and heat stroke testing. And I think there's like three or four tests you have to take. And it's supposed to be tracked, redone every two, oh, first aid, basic first aid, basic CPR, or the CPR cert. And I just wonder who's actually tracking that to make sure it's all up to date and on file.
Good point, Rob. Good point.
Well, you would think that the LMS athletic director would do that.
But I think we asked last year and we never saw, I don't think we ever saw anything about. And it might have been two years ago. It might even have been before you got here.
Yes. Can you say it one more time?
I think we had asked just to see if there was a, a master sheet showing that all of our coaches at LMS are actually have the certifications they're supposed to. And it's not, I should point out, it's not ridiculous certifications. It's like three or four twenty-minute online, watch a video, take a test.
Let me get that from Tom.
Yeah, I definitely would want to see that.
Well, and I don't want to get anybody in, don't want to get anybody in trouble. I remember somebody mentioning at a board meeting a year or so ago that in a sport, a kid took a nasty blow to the head and went back in five minutes later. I just remember that being brought up. And those are the things that, you know, are we getting, we need to know, are we getting injury reports filled out at the middle school? Are we getting them tracked? Are we getting, you know, concussion protocol done correctly? I mean, that might be something.
My other question, I mean, was just an observation about the, you know, the, the level, the first programs at each of the three schools. I know that they're different programs and they're run in different ways, but to have six teachers with stipends at GMS, one teacher and two assistants at LMS, and then it looks like one stipend, but it's maybe split between however, however many coaches we have at the, at the high school. It just, I don't know. It just seems inequitable.
But at GMS, at GMS, they have six teams that are smaller than the team that Robin, for me. And, and Robin could probably use more help, but you also have, it's the ninth graders who are a bit more independent than first through fourth.
Did you, like forty kids last year or some crazy amount?
She did.
Yeah. And there were a lot of fans.
How many were in the GMS groups?
They're smaller. They're, they're five, six, maybe.
That isn't fair.
Yeah. Robin had four teams last year of about, well, four teams that went to the competition that we went to. I think she had eight teams. I don't know. It just seems like, I know that there aren't a lot of opportunities at GMS for actual programs. I feel like that is one that they offer. So a ton of kids sign up for it. I'd just like to see some more well-rounded options for kids eventually. I know that's not an issue, you know, that we can, that we can.
The thing with the left, at GMS, it's kind of lottery. Like you sign up, some kids don't, get the, and, you know, they could probably use more than, more, more people doing it than less because there's a popular program and it feeds Robin's program in the middle.
Is it near around?
Competitive? Well, I know for LMS at least, I presume that GMS is probably the same, that the, the competitive portion of it is in the fall, but they do continue to do work in the spring. But competition at the end of that season.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that means. Anyway, it just was an observation. I mean, I do want, I, I, you know, I love that our teachers are willing to do that and, and to put it in that time for our kids. It's great.
And the amount of time.
In one, in one specific activity.
But then you look at Robin who's doing it for just as many kids and she's only getting paid once. I don't know.
Again, I think there's a big difference between doing the first grader, second grader, third grader, fourth grader than there is seventh and eighth graders.
Seven through eight. It's not just seventh and eighth. It's grade five through eight.
Right. Well, what I'm saying, my, my point is what Cory said, it's a little bit easier like dealing with fifth graders and eighth graders than it is first and fourth.
The competitive, the competitive team.
You know, just a reminder for the board that it was a representative committee of, you know, both LEA members and it was me, Josh, Holly that were on the committee. Barbara assisted us. And then we had Sean McDonough, Wendy Langjelier and Sandy Dusset that were part of it. And then it went forward to a vote. I can guarantee you that, that Robin would have spoken up in any conversation along the way and given her input. So this is, you know, this was a open process to get to where it landed. So.
Okay. I have never heard of the library computer club.
Which, which.
So that's an actual.
Which school is that?
Yeah, it's at LMS. Never even heard of it.
That's, that is, it's after, isn't that after school, like four days a week? That's Amy Provincial. She runs.
I think that was like a little more. Or kids that were like extra help.
It's, I think it's all. It's a kind of a learning.
Oh.
You can just go hang out in the library and.
I didn't know it was called computer club. It was, I didn't really think that that, I thought that was just, you know, an extra place that they could go after school for a little while, just hang out in the library. So that's what it's called then. Okay.
I think that's accurate. Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Okay.
We had PBIS coaches, a coaches.
Well, I, that one stuck out to me. Who is our PB, PIBS coach? Is it, I, I'm shocked. It's probably a guidance.
I'm sorry, which, which school is that under? That's under?
LMS.
Yeah, I, I'll have to get back to you, but it's, it's, again, I have it in my computer. I just can't get at it right now. I'll get you an answer as to who that is though.
All right. So do you need a, a vote to approve this?
We, we need to approve this because it's under, you know, it's under the CBA. We had this joint committee. Here's the work of it. And now we need the board to vote on it.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Yep.
For the co-curricular stipends.
Rob's made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Larry's.
Further discussion? Hearing that, all of the favors seen, they fought by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So the motion was made by, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Rob.
Rob.
Rob made the motion. Liz, second? Put it right down. Tina?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Brian's an aye. So the motion passes five, zero, zero.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
I don't, I think you're done, Mike. So I think actually the last thing is just the manifest. And again, I'll ask that at least three of you can make it down to CHS and sign the manifest. I will not be available to sign. So I don't know if anybody's gone down today or yesterday.
It'll be there tomorrow, Cory.
Michelle, who has the manifest? Do you have it?
It's at the CHS office. It's in the CHS office.
Okay.
I'll go down in the morning. I'll go in the morning.
All right. All right. So I think that's everything. So, so our next meeting is June third, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to adjourn? Aye.
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 So let's go right through it. Tina?
Aye. Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Brian's an aye. Motion's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye.